Starting now. Okay, good evening and welcome to the February 3 Village of Woodbury Planning Board. I am your chairman, Christopher Gerber, and I'm going to ask that everyone please rise for the... Sorry, looking for my flag. Pledge allegiance. Hi, pledge allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Please be seated. Okay. All right. Get right down to business. So I'll offer a motion to accept the January meetings of the minutes of the January 6 meeting as provided.
I made that motion.
Tommy, okay, any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
All right, so pass. Thank you very much. First item on the regular agenda this evening is Friedman, review and discuss site plan submitted for conversion of an existing thousand-foot addition of a single-family home to be used as a place of worship. Said property is located at 32 Blueberry Lane in Highland Mills and is known in the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps, Section 217, Block 2, Lot 4, dot 2. All right, Mr. Fusco, I saw you were here.
Right here.
All right, so just real quick, thousand-foot view what we're here for, and then we'll go into reports.
Yes. Basically, what we have done is we had applied for a turn a portion of the residence into a house of worship, a community shul for about a dozen or less participants. What we had done is, you know, going back and forth a little bit about the zoning. Obviously, we do need some waivers in relationship to the bulk requirements. When you put both the residence and the house of worship together, it increases some of the bulk requirements, which we do not meet four of them, three or four, but let's say it's four because that's what was listed on the consultants. The front yard is maybe iffy because in one spot it's 79 feet instead of 50, and another little corner it's 47. But basically, we are requesting waivers, and that would be the bulk requirements and the parking. Your zoning does allow for extenuating circumstances and waivers and relationships to houses of worship, and we are relying upon that to try to put this facility into operation. I don't know if any of you have seen it, especially in the summer, it's very neat, lots of flowers and green grass, and it's, you know, very attractive property. We did do a narrative of questing this and going into it. I'm sure you've all looked at it. I can go into it for specifics. But, you know, basically, we also did a little bit of a traffic study, and it doesn't appear that it will change the levels of service in any of the adjoining areas. Again, probably the issue is the parking. But again, we're only going to have a dozen worshippers, most of which will be walking to the facility because they're local. We will have some parking available, but we really don't believe we need all that much because of the, you know, the way that the parishioners will, you know, walk to the facility. Basically, that's it in a nutshell, but we can get into any of the specifics as you so wish.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fusco. Yeah, well, I have some questions, but let me go to the consultants first, and then we'll go from there. Natalie, you want to take first swing here?
Sounds good. So the application was last before you in October. Since then, they've revised the plan to show some additional parking spaces. Pretty much the sidewalk location has stayed the same, but the general site improvements are for the sidewalk, parking spaces, landscaping, and then on the most recent submission, they actually showed relocation of the neighbor's driveway that was on the applicant's property to the neighbor's property. So we have some comments on that. I won't go over too much of the waivers that were requested. Mr. Fusco did describe how they're applying for waiver based on substantial burden to the religious practices. We will say that it is the applicant's responsibility to demonstrate the burden that is imposed by the site restrictions based on the code requirements. What we do, the waivers that we think are required are for lot area, lot width, front yard, and lot coverage. Another important issue that we think exists is the designation of area within the building that's proposed to remain single-family home and what's actually designated to be converted to a shul. That impacts, obviously, the water and sewer demand as well as the number of parking spaces and how many people could actually attend the shul. While the plan suggests that it's 1,000 square feet, based on the floor plans, we calculate 2,763 square feet will be used as a shul. If you use the larger of those two areas, the parking requirements result in 14 spaces for the shul and then two spaces for the single-family home, and then a total of 16 spaces. The plan shows five at this time, in addition to on-street parking spaces, which does not satisfy your code requirement for off-street parking spaces, and we think that these should be removed from the plan. You do have some discretion to determine an appropriate amount of parking based on the demonstration of substantial burden. The applicant's narrative did attempt to describe the parking need. It was a little confusing to me. I think at one point it said 10 spaces are required, seven based on ITS standards, and then they even state that there won't be many days where more than seven vehicles are required, so I think that needs to be clarified and then presented to you as part of their substantial burden package. What else do we got? They did provide the level of service calculations, as Mr. Fusco suggested. We defer to Mazer on that. I think in the future you could request their input. Regarding the water and sewer for the property, we did receive a bacteria analysis for the well supply and a report with findings on a dye test for the septic system operation. For water, we want to have the applicant confirm that the usage is actually expected to be 620 gallons per day, and then they should demonstrate that the well can produce the volumes that are required. Furthermore, additional quality testing is required per the DOH recommendations, and our memo included a fact sheet at the end of it with their suggested testing parameters, so we'll look forward to receiving that. We did also receive from the engineer a report on the dye test that was performed, and that may be okay, but we did have some questions about the size of the tank, what's the condition of the tank. The previous subdivision plan showed the location of the septic field underneath the paved parking area, but then the new plan suggests that it may be in a different location, so we'd like to know that the location of that field was confirmed and then the actual location reflected on the plan. And then if those water and sewer facilities are proven acceptable, we think it would be appropriate, especially given the representation by the applicant, that there may only be 12 worshippers to consider limiting the number of worshippers as a condition of your action. We did have some comments on stormwater related to showing grade lines and confirmation of compliance with your water quality protection overlay, and also provision for an erosion and sediment control plan. And then we had some other comments, you know, that I think could be addressed with future revisions. The only other thing that I wanted to just kind of bring up again was that relocation of driveway onto the neighboring property. I do think that at a minimum consent from the owner is required, but I know council will provide some important information for that to you. That's all I have, unless you guys have any questions.
We have questions for Natalie. Okay, Jonathan?
Yes, you have a memorandum from NPV dated January 27. We also commented that the site plan shows 1,000 square feet for the shul use, but we noted 2,763, same number as Natalie just said, for the square footage on the floor plans. And we'd like to see the floor plans labeled very clearly with which rooms are for the shul and the size of each. We noticed that the sanctuary or major space for prayer appears to be about 1,000 square feet, which could fit under fire code, maybe 65 people. So we question, you know, whether the 12 worshippers is really a realistic number, but the applicant has reduced the number from 25 from previous semitals. So it could be handled as a condition of approval, but it seems like it might be better planning to plan for more than that now, since the space can already accommodate more than 12 people. On the landscaping plan, we noted that existing plantings aren't shown, and we want to give credit for that, so we would like to know both what's to be planted, but also what's there already, so we can see how it all will look together. We defer to the engineers on the well and septic adequacy issues. The the parking requirements, we also noted 16 spaces would be required, and we also noted that there were off-site parking on the cul-de-sac shown. One thing that is new that Natalie didn't mention or a different comment. In earlier versions of the application, at the turnaround, at the end of the driveway, there was an island that was going to be removed and made flush with the pavement. Now the island is back in the design, and there are parking spaces drawn in that are kind of behind the island, and the ones that are number two and three look like they'd be very difficult to get in and out of and don't seem to be the right size, it looks like. One of them looks like it only scales out with a hand scale, maybe 14 feet long, and not wide enough. So we'd like for the engineers to look at how those spaces are drawn and make sure they're really workable. And those are our comments.
Thank you, Jonathan. Do you have questions for Jonathan? I have a few for the discussion this evening. What happened to the 13 applicants, well, the 13 other parishioners, worshippers, sorry, congregants? Because initially, when this was in front of us, it was a 25-person shul, and there is no mikvah here, right? So I presume they're using a mikvah somewhere else.
Yeah.
In the basement.
Yes, in the lower level, it's shown.
Yeah, I'm looking at the wrong map. Okay. So, okay, let's...
I can address that.
Where'd the 13? Let's go.
The 25 was something that we put in without discussion with the applicant necessarily. We're looking at the, again, as you related to the size of the rooms. The size of the rooms are that large because there are existing rooms in the residential area that are being converted over to the house of worship. When I discussed with them and I talked to them three times, actually, to get to the number 12, and they actually had told me I wanted to stick with a larger number, but they felt that they only had the 12, so that's what we went to. That's where the other 13 went. Again, the areas are larger because they are existing rooms that are to be utilized for, you know, worshiping purposes rather than a dining room or playroom or whatever else it was previously. One of the things, and I do understand that the square footage does lend itself to, you know, 60-plus, you know, loud occupancies. However, as you did state, and we would be willing to take conditional approval on the basis of 12 worshippers. If, in fact, we exceeded that, I'm very sure the building department could exercise their enforcement against the property. But that's all their intent is, is for 12 worshippers.
If I may, for the record, I'm appearing on this for the applicant also, so... And you're going to have to forgive me because I think I have the old set of plans in front of me. How many rooms in the place in made up the 2,700 square feet? Is that one room or is that a number of rooms?
No, several rooms.
On two floors.
And did we designate them on the plan as being specific for this use?
Yes. Okay.
It was just requested to have the square footage, and we actually, you know, as soon as we got this material, we did do that. We have a chart with all of them. Obviously, you're not privy to that, but you will be during our next meeting where we dimensioned each of the rooms, and we actually put down on them what they were, what their use was, and how it related to the residential use.
That would be very helpful.
Yeah, we did that, you know, after it was requested. We saw it in the listings over the last, you know, few days, and we did put that together. We did not want to send it to, because I know I do a lot of reviews for other municipalities, and that always throws everybody off, but we will have that submitted to you for the next round of meetings. But it is, I came up with 2,762, 2,763, you know, same difference, and the residential aspect is 2,290, give or take. And we have that all laid out. We also have some photographs of the area that we can share with you as well. You know, without covered with snow, you can see what it looks like in the, you know, summer weather.
Yeah, and my notes indicate that in the basement level, you've got an office, the mikvah dressing room, a conference room with a waiting area, a shul pantry, and mechanical rooms for the mikvah, where the filters and tanks are and so forth. Then on the first floor, you've got the prayer room or main sanctuary, a library, and a study. So those were the, that's what made up the 2,763.
You're correct. And yeah, there was a laundry in there, too. Yeah. That's correct.
And I don't see the water retention pond. Typically, the other mikvah shuls we've had in front of us have had some sort of rainwater collection system that they've turned into a landscape feature. Is there going to be one here?
I don't have that down. I believe that they were collected out of the gutters, if I'm not mistaken, but let me check.
Yeah, sometimes, Chris, there's a tank in a room that's behind the mikvah that collects rainwater in a separate tank, and they'll use the roof to collect rainwater.
No, I know how they do it, but the other shuls that we've had in front of us have had an outside collection system that they've turned into some sort of landscape feature for the water. So I'm just curious where we're keeping that water here.
I think it was in the mechanical room, if I'm not mistaken. But I will check that.
Thank you, sir.
It had mechanical, here it is, filter room. Yeah, I think it would be in the filter room, the store in the filter room. And it would be collecting.
And we do have your narrative of the project, but it still needs to lay out how these waivers impact your how it impacts the applicant's ability to practice on-site. You know, you go into a very nice narrative of what you're going to be using the site for, but why, you know, that they can't, is there another facility they can or can't use? You know, things along that line. Typically, you spell out in the narrative why these waivers are needed because they place a burden on top of you being able to practice your religion properly.
We can expound on that. I did make note of it, that the closest, you know, shul is about a mile away and a 16- to 20-minute walk. So I did indicate that, but I will expand on that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Because, you know, as we've talked about in the past, the burden is on the applicant here for the waivers. Sandy, Tommy, Rich.
Speaking of the other, do you have the address of the other shul, the one that's a mile away?
I don't have it right with me, but I will put that in the revised narrative.
Okay, and then I'm assuming that these 12 worshippers are adult men. This is not going to be anything for children or women?
I can't totally speak to that, but I will identify that for you.
Well, I know, as Chris had said, with the other shuls, there was always a separation of mikvahs as well as prayer rooms for, you know, the men versus the women, and then there was also, I think at least on two of them, there was strict adherence as far as children attending, you know, with their fathers. So if we're talking about 12 and children are included in that, you know, I'd really like to see the numbers and to know whether or not, you know, how it's going to break down, if this is going to be met.
We'll verify that. I was just told the number 12, not any breakdown of it, but I will break that down for you.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Yeah, and typically saying, don't we see a breakdown of, because of the men that usually, like, who's going to go for daily prayer and then the max occupancy on high holy days and on Friday night and Saturday? Because I know those two uses sometimes can differ based on the time of day and the holiday.
Okay.
And just confirm with your applicant, we've done with all our shuls, that they're solid on the times of operation. Usually, we do a half hour before and after as a little bit of leeway as far as operations of, and a lot of that has to do around outside lighting, things along that line. Anybody else from the board?
Is this going to be used seven days a week?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, generally times a day also.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I have two questions, Rich. What is the maximum capacity of the mikvah in terms of women?
I think you're going to have to probably get that, right?
Yes.
Yeah, because the reason I'm asking, if I look, the basement isn't built yet, right? That's to be built? I mean, the basement, there's a lot of different rooms for different uses.
Right, it is, correct.
So it's going to be built? Meaning the rooms, the rooms.
There, but it will be built out, yes, sir. That's correct.
And...
I just got a text from one of my applicants, and there will be no women, no women.
What about children?
I didn't get that text yet.
Okay.
Hold on a second.
Children on Saturday. Children on Saturday.
So is that in addition to the 12?
Oh, you're going to say, is that part of the 12?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
No, y'all, hold on, someone shaking their head in the corner. Yoow, yoow.
The children would be extra, children extra.
Okay, so we're going to need to know the complete occupancy, not just 12 men, 12 adults. It's going to be 12 adults, 24 children, whatever it's going to be. You're going to have to go back. You're going to have to work on that one.
The minimum size of a religious gathering is 10 men. So there has to be, there has to be 10 men, so if, regardless, so it only leaves two extra slots for children.
Okay, the children would be extra.
And man minimum to make sure.
Yes, you're right. I forgot about that point. Thank you, Jonathan.
Yeah.
Yeah, the other thing, good, Mr. Fusco, just go over the basement. There's a lot of different uses of rooms in the basement, but I only see one bathroom on the congressional area.
Excuse me, one second.
I mean, if you're going to have that many people, I think you should have more than one bathroom. One toilet, I mean, unless I'm reading this wrong. I'm trying to differentiate. Maybe you can outline next, what is the residential area, you know, put a border around?
Yeah, that's what we asked for the breakdown.
Yeah, first is the
We'll show you the residential versus the house of worship area, so we should and have that already done. I didn't submit it because it was just made available to me this evening.
Is there currently a three-person bathroom in that residence?
I saw a reference to that, but I haven't verified it, so I will verify that.
What about services for children? Are there any plans for daycare or religious services outside of the normal prayers? And just cars, or whether it be during the day, any sorts of vans or bus up? Somebody just changed. You're muted, sir.
I don't believe so. I don't see it in the areas for children services.
Well, there's, yoow, I know I'm probably screwing it up. There we go. Yeah, now we hear you.
Okay, so the children are going to be, they're going to come together with the parents, with the father, the shul on Saturday, and there's not going to be any other services for them. Now, someone asked a question about the bathrooms. So the mikvah downstairs in the basement will be only used like about two, three people at once. It's not going to be like heavily used. So we have one bathroom downstairs, and then a few bathrooms upstairs.
Is it a separate men's, is it going to be like a stall for a man and a stall for a woman, correct? Because it can't be, or is it going to be no?
It's not, it's not, it's not, we don't have, we don't provide a separate women's area there. It's just, it's a little shul for men. It's not like meant to be like a big shul where the women are going to come. It's not prepared for them.
I think what we're looking for, the adequacy of your septic system and your water system to serve the shul is based on the number of gallons per person or, and what we're really looking for is if you're going to have a service on Shabbat or Shabbos with 10 men, and they're going to each bring one or two children, you're really going to have 10 adults and maybe 15, 20 children. You know, so that's different plumbing-wise than just 12 people, period. So that's why we're asking about the numbers so many times.
Okay, so this is a neighborhood shul, so it's not like someone goes away from the house for a while or something. They just come to do the services. I mean, we have bathrooms available for them, but it's, but the people, I mean, in fact, they're probably not going to use it that much because it's right next to their houses, and they come just to do the services, they go back home. So it's not like someone goes away from home for a while and go to shul. It's just a neighborhood thing. And, I mean, the bathrooms are going to be available for them, but we're not expecting that it should be used too much. And, um, I mean, the bathrooms are gonna be available for them, but, but it's not that, we're not expecting that it should be used, um, too much.
And I apologize for all of the questions, but this is a little bit of a different, um, while it's a shul, the other shuls that we've had in front of the board before have been mixed shuls. Um, you know, we have, so, you know, there's a little bit of a different level of question because we're kind of wrapping our heads around your particular use because it seems like it's a very narrow use. So there's just a little bit more of a learning curve here, some little additional questions. Um, so I apologize for that, but we're just trying to flush all the details out. Um, we really wanna, just, we want to get everything out there. We want to get, we don't want to have you keep coming back and forth. We don't want to keep having appearances here. So, and that's all we're trying to do here, is get all the information out there. So this time, you know, next time you guys are here, we can really kind of help move the process uh, along, and that's all we're trying to do here right now. So I just apologize.
We appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, well, one of the things on the, uh, usage is we had calculated out what the usage was, and it was, uh, you know, in, in the, uh, you know, six hundred and sixty gallon range, that type of thing. And we did the dye test accordingly. And relationship to the, uh, so, um, you know, basically, and there is sufficient water for that use. You know, uh, it estimated a minimum of five, uh, you know, gallons per minute, uh, which related to, you know, well over seven thousand gallons a day. That's where, where we are only looking at six hundred plus gallons a day usage. Now, also in relationship to the, um, you know, Department of Health, a public water supply doesn't take place until after, you know, twenty-five people for, uh, a period of sixty days or longer. And that is, uh, within the one-year period, and we really don't have that at all. So, uh, the, the testing in the water, uh, by the Department of Health, I don't believe is required. I will verify that with them and get something, uh, maybe an email or something from them in that regard as well.
Kind of to elaborate on that a little bit, too. Um, the testing will be required whether or not the Department of Health mandates it because the review of this water supply well will be by the building department and the planning board. And per their recommendations, the Department of Health, they have that list of, uh, contaminants and parameters that should be tested, so we'd like to see those results. Um, and then also as far as the dye test was concerned, I know I had spelled out some of the questions in our memo, so I assume that you'll respond to them. Um, in our experience, you know, you have to really strain the system to get an accurate reading from that dye test result. So, uh, depending on the size of the septic tank, I'm not sure that the seven hundred and seventy gallons that you did use, uh, you know, we'll just want to review that data, uh, to see that, you know, we're gonna get real results. And I know that you provided your report, and we agree with that. It's just, uh, you know, like to have that information available.
Okay, I had a problem.
Jonathan, I think, um, because the parking area butts, uh, residential, don't we require the deeper, uh, planning board too, like we did on, um, the planning depth, like we did in Scuttermunk?
What kind of depths? I'm sorry.
The deeper, um, uh, the deeper planting, uh, oh my God, why can't I think of the term right now?
You mean the, the five-foot foundation plantings?
No, it was, it was the separating of the parking area from the residential to the parking area. We had this come up with Scuttermunk because it was a,
Oh, because it was a parking lot, and it had a certain number of spaces, and I think you needed a tree for every certain number of square feet. Um, uh, I don't believe there's enough parking spaces here uh, around that island to kick that in. Um, uh, the, they're only offering, um, their proposal is for five spaces, so there isn't a tree required for just five spaces.
Okay.
Uh, but, uh, if you, I don't know that that's really necessarily where they're going to end up, whether you'll accept or the, the provision of only five spaces. If they were to provide more than five spaces, that, that design requirement could kick in.
Well, that is something, Mr. Fusco, you'll have to spell out in your substantial burden, why those five spaces will be sufficient.
I will, thank.
Anything else from the planning board?
Uh, yeah, I just have one other question. Um, so the, the two thousand seven hundred and sixty-three square feet is the correct size of the shul, of what's going to be used for the shul?
Yes, yes. We had one last seventy-two, seventy-three, same difference.
Okay, but again, that, that size is quite large for just twelve, twelve worshippers, so.
Said before, there were existing rooms. If it were to be built new day, uh, facility, uh, it would have been smaller, but they're just taking existing rooms and converting them into, uh, places of worship. That's why they're larger.
It's not in anticipation of growing perhaps, or no?
That's not my understanding at all.
I believe Al did state that they would be willing to take a, uh, condition of approval on number of congregants.
Okay, I just, I, I'm, I'm just curious because, I mean, I would rather, you know, it just, you started with twenty-five, so if that's truly what, what is anticipated, I would rather, you know, review it for that usage from the start, rather than have to put a, a very strict condition on the resolution. But if that's, if that's where it stands, then, okay.
Thank you. Twenty-five was my number because I looked at it and I said something similar to what you're thinking. But when I spoke to them, they told me the number was twelve. So we backed down to that because those are the local, uh, residents there.
Okay.
And that's a very local shul.
Okay.
Uh, is it possible to consider a public hearing so we could get this, uh, you know, going? Uh, and, uh, you know, hopefully we could get, uh, all this information to you and, uh, you know, so they, you know, might be able to have the facility for Passover.
I don't think it's ready for a public hearing.
We're not, we're not there yet. You have to, we have to see the plans that our engineer, our consultants have to review before we'll go there. Because if there's a lot of change between here and there, then we're, we're gonna either end up leaving the public hearing open and I don't, I don't think that's fair to do right now. I don't think we're in the right spot.
I just needed to ask.
I understand. Sorry, Rick, I totally forgot about you on this application. Sorry.
That's okay. Um, I, I do have a couple of comments, one of which is, um, what was just referenced again, that, um, that they are willing to live with a condition of twelve right now. Um, but it certainly should be of some concern um, that it was coupled with the comment, if we go over that, then it's subject to a building code enforcement matter. I, I, I don't think that's how this should be looked at. Um, and also with twelve adults, um, if they're bringing, bringing children, it easily can get up to twenty-five or more. So I think that, uh, there has to be, um, not just off the top of the head, but a real study of how many people are going to be there.
And the children are included as, as people.
Absolutely, that's right. Um, so, um, the other thing with respect to, um, cars and parking is that the comment that, um, they, they walk to the services, um, really is only required on the Sabbath, Saturday, as well as high holy days. This is going to be open all, um, all week long. And so there may well be people that'll be driving there during those days that they're not prohibited from driving. So that also has to be considered in the narrative. Also, the, the narrative that I had asked for at the last meeting was with respect to the waivers and a narrative to demonstrate the substantial burden um, on the exercise of religion for each of those waivers that are being requested. Um, and although the narrative described the project in detail and described the variances needed in detail, or at least the failures, um, from the stated bulk requirements, there was really only one sentence that even addressed the issue of a substantial burden, and it says, "Without the approval of the waivers, uh, the local families within the neighborhood will have to travel to worship in alternative shuls." Um, I, I will tell you that I do not think that that satisfies a burden of showing a substantial burden on the exercise of religion. And so I think you need to revisit that, um, much more closely as to showing that this is a substantial burden. Um, and also realize that the, this, although there is a right to religious use on this property, and there's no doubt about that, um, if you need waivers from the bulk requirements, um, there is no guarantee that you can have any size of religious service that you want. It depends upon all the circumstances, including, uh, a demonstration of, uh, truly substantial burden on the exercise of religion because the waivers aren't necessarily up or down. It could be a waiver of less than the full that you're requiring. And I also think that you ought to demonstrate in a subsequent narrative, maybe revisions to the plans, the fact that initially, uh, regardless of who decided on the twenty-five, it was twenty-five people in a thousand-square-foot shul. Now we're talking about twelve in over two thousand. So there has to be some discussion as to why that's needed because the, the board could determine that maybe a thousand feet is, is sufficient. So if you want to have something more than that, you're really gonna have to demonstrate it. I believe that this application may also be subject to the new water quality overlay district because of its, um, adjacency to the Cromwell Lake. But I would ask the applicant to go ahead and look at that and see whether or not, um, you are subject to it, and if so, that you comply with the requirements of the new water quality overlay district. Um, and also with respect to the driveway, that looks like it's gonna be using a driveway, as Natalie referenced, uh, from a different property. If that's the case, then, um, you're gonna have to get an owner authorization for it to be included within this site plan, as well as any potential easements or other, um, recordings that you may need in order to allow that to occur. And those are all my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Rick. Does anybody have questions for Rick? Mr. Fusco, you, you good with your, your homework?
I am. I understand very well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, thank you very much. If there's other, other questions on this application. Okay. Moving on.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
You too. Take care, sir.
Good night.
Good night.
Sisngar, review revised materials submitted for proposed three-lot subdivision located off Susquehada Trail and Scuttermunk Road in Highland Mills. Said property is known in the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section two oh four, block one, lots two and three. Just give us one second to move paperwork around. Right in front of me. All right, Victor is. Are you representing yourself tonight?
No, I have, uh,
I know Jay.
I'm here on behalf of the applicant, and Dave Higgins should be here.
Yes, I'm online too. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. I just want to, uh, say hi to, uh, fellow bill, board members and consultants and fellow, uh, Woodbury, uh, townspeople. I'm only here if, uh, there's any questions, uh, that you might want to, uh, um, have answered, so, uh, I'm here for that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, Jay or David, are you guys who's, who's giving us the thousand-foot view?
Well, I guess I, I can, um, basically, uh, we were last here in front of the planning board, uh, actually, it was in person, I believe, last March, twenty twenty. Um, at that time, um, we had gone through plan revisions that we had, um, had prepared um, to address, uh, Dennis Lindsay's comments, um, at that meeting. I think, uh, they had, um, previously closed the hearing and had, um, withheld doing anything on secret because there was a question about going to the village board for a waiver, um, for, because we have a septic system proposed for each of the three lots. Um, and so that was the last meeting we were at in March of last year. Um, I can tell you that since that time, we have made some, you know, minor plan revisions, really, the plans are substant- substantially the same as what were submitted last year, but we did go through and address, uh, Dennis's, uh, technical comments. Um, and I believe Jay also had some correspondence regarding, you know, the fact that we're not in a sewer, um, service area. So that, um, as I understand it, a waiver's not required to proceed with septics in that situation. So that's where, that's where we are right now. I know there's some comments that, um, your planner and engineer had provided. We can go through those if you want, or if you have any questions, happy to try and address them off the bat.
All right, actually, we'll go, we'll go to Natalie first and then. Go ahead.
Hey, um, as Mr. Higgins said, uh, the application has been before you on a number of occasions, last in March twenty twenty, but I think it started in twenty eighteen. Um, many of our comments have been addressed, and our memorandum lists those where we think that, uh, you might consider them as conditions of your action. Uh, our notes on the last meeting, uh, similar to what Dave was just saying, uh, the availability of public water and sewer, um, and then whether or not the planning board could waive the requirement for shade, shade tree plantings along road frontages. Uh, those were two issues that were discussed, so quickly I'll kind of go over those. Um, as Mr. Higgins said, the village of, it, the property isn't within the Village of Woodbury sewer area, um, and then the public water supply is by others. So we think that it's appropriate how the applicant has shown, uh, their intention to proceed with individual well supplies and onsite septic fields. Uh, previously, the applicant had indicated that only lot one was proposed for development, and the, uh, testing for the sewer disposal system was witnessed by the building inspector, the deep impercolation tests, which we think is appropriate. Um, however, and although the prelimi- preliminary testing for the other lots does seem adequate, uh, we think that your action should include a condition that those tests be witnessed by the building inspector prior to your final plat approval. Um, as far as water supplies, similarly, uh, it's been your typical practice and our recommendation that the quantity and quality be proven prior to final plat approval. Uh, we think this can be a condition of your action. Um, there is a section in the code in the subdivision section two seventy-two, twenty-three, uh, design standards that requires the proposed subdivision conformed to the minimum requirements of chapter three ten zoning, uh, which does, again, specify proving adequate water quantity and quality. Um, we did reach out to the building inspector on the requirement for shade trees and whether or not that could be waived by the planning board. Uh, he said that that has been done previously for other, uh, applications where vegetation was present up to the right-of-way or street line. Uh, since the conditions of this application are similar, and if you agree to waive the provision, uh, we think that you can include in your action a condition that the healthy trees are maintained along the roadway. Um, some of the things that have changed since the last submission, um, are mostly related to your code provisions. Uh, although, uh, ridge preservation was a discussion at that time as well. Um, we did provide a rendering similar to the one that was submitted with the applicant's, uh, most recent submittal attempting to demonstrate the potential visibility of the site. Um, in our opinion, the visibility of these homes would be limited, uh, you know, just based on the restricted disturbance limits, uh, the topography, and then the existing vegetation. Um, your new code provisions for ridge preservation, which were well-crafted by your attorney, um, they require, or they allow you actually to require an easement to preserve that landscaping uh, and buffers where the visibility is predicated on vegeta- vegetation. Um, so we think that that might be appropriate for this application and something you could consider. Um, in our memorandum, uh, we note again that the ridge preservation regulations have changed, uh, so if the applicant would, should review these and update their plan accordingly, they have them listed, uh, on at least one of the sheets. Um, and then just to continue with the review and what you might require prior to a preliminary plat approval, uh, I think we should, uh, dis- discuss and consider if there's anything else that you would require from the applicant at this time. Uh, the ARB regulations have changed as well, uh, and that will require that each home, uh, be reviewed by the planning board at some point. Uh, we think this could be a condition of your action. And then, um, the last thing is regarding the water quality protection overlay requirements. Uh, it doesn't appear that the development will occur within the hundred-foot buffer area or the fifty-foot riparian zone, but, uh, we think, uh, it should be, the applicant should review those requirements and confirm that they comply with your code. Um, I had, that's all I have, unless you guys have any questions.
Questions for Natalie? From the board? Okay. All right, Jonathan?
Yes, thank you. You have a memo from Nelson Pope and Voorhees dated January 27. And we checked our records. This is the first time he's asked for review by NPV. We didn't participate in any of the earlier reviews before the planning board. The on the submissions, there are just a few things we'd like to see done to make it a little clearer. It was difficult to see the zoning district boundary between R2A and R3A. If you could fix that line, make it heavier or or a different line type. The information on sheets two and three that show the individual house sites with the septic systems and the wetlands. Those should be shown on sheet one as well at full at the full scale. So that you can see how the entire subdivision looks at once without just looking at sheets two and three. The the we also noted that the 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 wetlands were just located via GIS and haven't been don't appear to have been flagged, or at least the flags are not shown. And ultimately, to get subdivision approval, you'll need jurisdiction determination by Army Corps and DEC validation of the wetlands. Also, we didn't we the the watershed protection law, we need to see the outlet coming out of Shadow Lake to the south. Exactly where that is and with the buffers shown. We would like to see site distance measurements for the proposed driveways on lots two and three, particularly since there's a curve in Scutamuck Road to the north. And you know, we'd like to see, make sure there's adequate line of sight coming in and out of those driveways, or perhaps there may be some clearing needed to provide better visibility. So that should be looked at. Also typically, we like to see proposed grading within the area disturbance for the house sites. And that would lead to into your SWIP plan that the engineer will review. We noted that local law five of 2020 changed the definition of lot area. And these lot areas in the subdivision need to have netted out the steep slopes and wetlands that are required in the amounts required by that local by the local law. The ridge preservation, I won't go into that since Natalie kind of covered that that topic. Our comment nine is I think is important, and that has to do with the potential for lot two to be shown to be further subdivided in the future. And there's an access. There's an access road that was on a separate plan sheet that could go across lot two to provide access to its rear in the future to provide further subdivision. And we would recommend that as this is structured, that this road that could go across route two needs to be shown in the subdivision plan. It can't just be floating out on a separate sheet. And that you might want to structure the subdivision to have another phase. The people who purchased lot two will need to know officially that there's a a road that may be plotted through their property in the future to provide further access to the back. So how that would work, how we need to know how the conceptual road could lead to another phase and have that included in the subdivision application. For a seeker, I know that the Mr. Golden's office handles the seeker. But we looked in the environmental mapper. And we noted that there is potential presence of threatened or endangered species. And also sensitive archaeological areas and that wasn't noted in the in the in the part one. So we'd like to see that addressed as seeker moves forward. Those are our comments.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any questions for Jonathan? All right, Rick?
Sorry, I have just a few comments. One, since the last time that this application was before this board. As I indicated in the last application, there was a new law, a water quality protection overlay district that was enacted. It looks like at least one area, a trigger area is included in this. So it asked the applicant to go ahead and look at that law and make sure that they they are in compliance with that. And as Jonathan said, we're here, part of the reason we're here is to look over the AF part two that was provided. But Jonathan brings up a very good point. When I looked at the EAF part one that he after he made that reference. I don't see that there is the mapper information that are attached to the part one. Dave, when did you do it on online with the mapper?
Yeah, I think, Rick, we typically do. I can tell you that I look back to the file and see what we had. And I think probably what happened was that's, you know, sometimes I imagine folks that are using the map or find from time to time that for whatever reason, it simply doesn't work. So I think when we made the submission, the site probably wasn't working. So we just filled out a NEF form, not using their online service. But I did check the mapper after receiving the comment letter from from Jonathan and confirm that, you know, it does say what he indicated. It does have their records indicate, you know, archaeological resources and endangered habitat. So we'll address that and get that back into the board.
Yeah, I think it makes sense rather than going through part two now, especially since you're going to have to come back anyway. Is that you go ahead and submit before the next meeting. EAF part one with the mapper attachments. And also any explanations that you want to give with respect to the the trigger aspects of these things as the the board is well aware that simply because the mapper triggers something doesn't mean that it's actually present on the site. It may be up to a mile or more away from the site. And therefore may not be an impact for this project. But Dave, that that'll be up to you to go ahead and analyze and then submit whatever you want to the board as far as explanation by way of those triggers done by the mapper.
Yep, we'll we'll take care of that and get that into the into the board as soon as we can. And Rick, to ask a question, you had said something about the water quality protection overlay district. The law. Is that on the village website? Is it codified on E360? Or where would I find the information on that?
I would I would think that it's by now codified, but if for some reason you can't find it, contact me and I'll I'll send you a copy of the law.
I believe the last time I looked, it's on E60. However, it's not codified in the main body of the code. You have to look at the part where there are local laws that haven't been.
Okay.
But if you're having trouble getting it, just give me a call, email me and I'll send it to you right away.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Rick.
Already reference, it's a local law number six 2020 on that E code 360.
Thank you.
I just put it in the chat if you want to like.
And the other, the only other thing that was brought up is that apparently there is a municipal boundary line issue on this property with respect to the village of Woodbury and the village of South Blooming Grove. The way that I will in some of these boundary line issues, and there's a few of them from time to time and have litigated at least one of them when the county between Orange County and Sullivan County, that was a big one. These things take a very, very long time to resolve. And so we certainly shouldn't expect that that boundary dispute between municipalities is going to get resolved before its decision time for this board. So that I I think what we'll simply do is have something in the resolution that would indicate that to whatever extent this decision affects lands that are ultimately outside of the village of Woodbury, that your decision is going to be restricted to those lands within the village of Woodbury. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so like we'll hold off on the AF two and anything else tonight, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so go ahead, David.
I was gonna say, Mr. Chairman, if I can, there were some comments, I think it's probably worth going through. And if we can do that, I'd probably just kind of start from the back, I guess, start with with Jonathan's comments. And we'll just go through really quickly. Number one, he talks about, you know, clarifying the the boundary between the R2A and R3A district. We'll 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 provide that on the next submission. There was a question about number two was asking that we show the house sites, wetland septic systems, et cetera, that are shown on lots two and sheets two and three, show them on sheet one. My preference really is to keep sheet one really clear, you know, particularly in light of the county clerk's office really wants everything to be clear and not cluttered and text has to be legible. And I will add some of the information like the house sites and the driveway maybe, but I don't think I'm going to add like all the wetlands on that first sheet. If that's okay, because I think what's going to happen is that first sheet is going to get very, very cluttered. You're going to have a hard time discerning the property line information. If it's, you know, if it's absolutely required by the board, I'll do what I can. But my my intention really is to keep it clean on the first sheet and provide some reference so that you can see where the houses are and the driveways maybe.
But I think my 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 goal for for the comment is that I actually, you know, I actually had to do quite a lot of page flipping to try to figure out, okay, here's where the house is next to the road and here's where the here it is in relation to the lake. Then I went back to to sheet one and I in the houses there, I couldn't figure out where it was and you know, I have to keep. So so I think that at least if you have the house sites and then have a little square that says detail on sheet four or whatever. You through inset maps or through, you know, a location box or you can go relate another sheet for detail. Just but 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 just to see those relationships, I think is it is good.
Got it. Okay, we'll take care of that. Let's see, third one was the village boundary line, which Rick just touched on.
Right.
We are working on that and Rick just, you know, we have my surveyors have been in contact with the surveyors at the county tax map office. And basically, we just, we're going to be sending them the map. Actually, probably within the next week or so, so that at least they can see it and make sure that they're agreeable with the form and that it's going to be for filing. So we don't get down to printing my Lars and then find out that the county had some issue with it. But they're they're clear of the issue and we're going to have them review it too.
I just realized though that it may take some time because from the county's point of view, it's more than just adjusting a tax slot within a particular jurisdiction, because now we're talking about two different taxing jurisdictions that may have an effect that the county may want both municipalities to weigh in favorably on any change.
Okay. Okay. All right. So number moving on number five, the site distances for the driveways on lots two and three. We do show that on sheet three. I don't know if you had not seen that, Jonathan, but there's a table.
I must have missed it.
Okay, we we show the site distances on there. And as you indicated, there is some minor clearing along the the driveways that we know. But the site distances are are suitable and they meet the requirements. That that's okay. Number six, proposed grading for each of the lots. We'll add that for the next submission. Okay. Number seven, a lot areas needing to be adjusted with steep slopes and wetlands deducted. We do show those calculations on sheet one. And I looked, I mean, we from from what I could read from the local law and how we have it calculated on sheet one, unless I'm missing something, we have the areas deducted in accordance with the local law. So much percentage of the deep slopes that are between 15 and 25% and then I think it's 50% I think of anything over 25% and the wetland. So we do show all those calculations on the first sheet.
Okay, that that's fine. And as long the other typically labeling is good where sometimes it might be helpful to show the, you know, I was looking at your addition of overall acreages and the lots are labeled with their full acreage. That adds up to the total acreage of the site. So maybe you could also just so it's really clear that maybe on the labels of for each lot with its full acreage, just show its net acreage as well.
Oh, you mean, I see what you're saying.
That would clear that up.
I I got you. So I understand what you're saying. Okay. All right, we'll do that. So so it's the label as well, label net. Okay. All right. We'll take care of that. Number eight had to do with the the visual the visibility of the of the house from the view shed corridor.
Natalie didn't seem as concerned as as I was. But you had picked the lower of the houses to do that cross section. There are higher houses.
Yeah.
So I I it I was curious as to how it would turn out if you if you did the profile up to the highest house, you know, whether it would still work out.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we can provide, we'll provide the other two, you know, so the view from the intersection there. The reason I picked that one was because it was closest. But also it's sort of like the straightest shot down the road. So you know, when you're looking at the opening of the intersection of Ridge Road and Owens Drive, you know, you kind of got houses on both sides of the road. And then, as you'll see from the profile, which we'll we'll submit on the other two lots as well. But there's a topography and and you know, vegetation that comes in and basically disrupts your view also, but we'll we'll get those into the into the town. I mean, into the village rather. And then there was a number nine had to do with showing on the map the proposed future road. And I'm not sure, maybe you weren't at the one of the prior meetings, but we had talked about this. The the map that we showed for the conceptual road, we had, I believe, agreed that it wasn't going to be on this map because this map gets filed in the county clerk's office. What we did on this map is include a note, which it's note eight on sheet one. And basically, it's it's advising that there is a map on file with the town, I'm sorry, with the village planning board that shows a conceptual road and that any future development of lot two would basically need to refer to that map and that that's the likely location of a of a road that the that the village planning board has already reviewed and essentially is indicated is probably where it would go.
Well, I apologize for any confusion, but as I know, at the very beginning of my talk, I know the boards met four times on this, but we were only ever asked to comment at this time. And I just my 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 overall concern is is that what's going to happen in the future on lot two somehow not get lost. And it's it seemed like maybe that what that was going to be is another phase where lot two got further subdivided. But if if the board's already discussed it, and this is your method is already been deemed suitable by the board, I don't want to interfere with that.
Okay, right. Yeah. And like I said, the note is on sheet one if you haven't noticed it there, but it's it's intended to alert, you know, basically anyone in the subdivision that there is a plan that was read by the planning board. So.
Yeah, I know. And I was I was looking for it to be integrated into the subdivision, but obviously it's been discussed already.
Okay, all right. And then just I won't go through item by item on Natalie's letter, but there were a few things I think that we want to go through. One of the comments has to do with percolation tests for lots two and three. And Natalie, you might not have had the opportunity to go through the the project history with Dennis fully. But we did do soils testing with Gary Thomasberger at the site. And if you check with Dennis, I believe that he will be able to concur. I have an email that I had sent to Dennis and to. I, I have an email that I had sent to Dennis and to Sean Hoffman in July of 2019. Indicating that we had the site visit with Gary Thomasberger. We had the perks ready to do on lots two and three and he basically determined that given the size of those lots. He didn't need to see the, the soils test. And he, at the time, he said, if there was any question on that, have Dennis give him a call. So I did let Dennis know that in July, I have an email, July twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen. You may want to just check with Dennis on that, but our understanding is the soils test for all three lots are completed to the satisfaction of the building department. And no more soils tests are required.
Okay, we, I'll check with, with Dennis, but it sounds reasonable.
Okay. I guess a question, and we, we did talk about this, but the, the well testing. My understanding is that the well testing was required as part of the site plan, which. As I understand for ARB, we have to come back to the planning board for. We're looking at developing potentially three lot, three wells on the hundred and twenty-four acres of property. I guess the question is, is well drilling and testing required for that level of development? And if so, at what time does that need to be done?
So I think I sort of tried to cover that in my report to the board. But again, in the past, and it's always been our recommendation that quantity and quality be proven before final plat approval. You know, we understand in most cases, developing the well at an early stage is, you know, too costly. But I do think that the code, the subdivision code, I think it, it was section two seventy-two, twenty-three. Refers to requirements, complying with the requirements of three-ten zoning for site plans. So if you're looking for that provision, I think that's kind of where that would come from. And also, just in general, I think it's good procedure, if you're going to create a subdivision and you're going to have three lots. You want to be sure that you're going to be able to have water supply for any future owner or occupants of that site, so. I think it's, it's something that we would require.
But my only comment on that would be is that it looks to me like we're only approving. One lot for development at this point, I'm looking at the footnote at the bottom of page one. Of Nat, of the H two M. Then so I, I just asked the board to consider whether it's a little harsh or overboard to require a well drilled for one. Lot that's really being approved for development at this time, we're not, obviously, we're not stressing. Water supply with a hundred lot subdivision here, it's basically one lot. And I was, and I know that, you know, based on the way this thing is being approved. Lot two is going to have to come back in for a further review. And lot two is, the other two lots are both going to have to come in for further review and approval. But right now, we're limited to basically this one particular lot. And I think I would ask the board to consider whether it's a, a stretch to really require a well drilled. Before he, before we can get our subdivision approval on this. When the building department is perfectly capable of, of handling this issue with the permitting requirements.
I'll, I'll just weigh in, in response. That my advice to the board is that there's a few things that are absolutely essential. Before they should be approving individual lots. And two of those are water and septic or sewer. Because once they go ahead and divide these lots and then they're sold. Nobody wants these people to come back and say, well, I don't have water, so you still have to do something because you're the one that subdivided this lot. So as a matter of course, this board has historically made sure that there was adequate water and sewer. For each parcel before they would approve a subdivision. Now, whether that's done by Natalie's office or Gary or something else. It doesn't really matter to me, other than my advice to the board is that they ought to be certain that it has adequate water and septic. Before they can approve a subdivision lot.
All right. I guess I had a couple of other things, unless, unless anybody from the board had any comments on what Rick just reviewed.
Well, I really think the only way to accomplish that is to have the, the wells drilled, right, Rick?
No, I, I'm not saying that because I don't know that. I, I'll rely entirely on Natalie to say whether or not there are alternate ways to ensure that there is adequate water. For the lot, I just want this board to be certain that in fact there is adequate water, however Natalie says that can be accomplished.
Yeah, and in my opinion, there's only one way to be sure of that and it would be to develop the wells. I understand that lot one is proposed to proceed to a residential dwelling first, where the other two lots may remain vacant. Certainly. For a lot one, the well has to be drilled and the supply proven. And then just to kind of reiterate, if the subdivision was five lots or more, it would be referred to the Orange County Health Department for review. Since it's less than five lots, it's the responsibility of the building department and the planning board to make sure that. The water and sewer facilities are adequate. So that's kind of where I think that this stage of the subdivision is. And again, just historically and, and always for subdivisions, it's been prior to final plat approval. The capacity and quality be, be verified.
So as indicated, I think the intention is to develop lot one out of the subdivision. And I guess, you know, I'll review with the, with the applicant, the, the, the need to have. The well on lot one drilled and then I guess, is the testing, four hour test. In accordance with Orange County Department of Health requirements to demonstrate five gallons per minute?
That's right.
All right, so I'll let them know that.
What you should do, Dave, and what we have done and with other applications is to submit a pumping test plan. For a review by the board and our office.
All right, I'll send that. All right, just moving on then, one of the other comments, I think that. And I think it was, I think Natalie, I think this was in your letter, I think. About the federal wetlands flagged and I think it was a statement earlier today that the wetlands were not flagged, not located. I can tell you that on lot one, where we are in the general vicinity of a wetland. We did have that delineated by Michael Nowicki. And we did map that, you know, locate it with the surveying instruments and showed that on the plan, there's a note on sheet. Two that indicates that, so the wetland that's over by lot one was in fact field located, determined and. The wetlands elsewhere on the property, it's a large piece of land, we're not really looking to develop. Those lots at this point in time, we were using Orange County Water Authority mapping for that. So I do not have. Jurisdictional determination and we're not proposing any wetland disturbance, which is. Typically what, what might trigger the need for jurisdictional determination, so hopefully what we have is sufficient.
Yes, that wasn't my comment, Dave, but I do see that, I think it's on sheet. Two, where you have shown that those are flagged. And then I think also, again, we have discussed this in the past and, and you have represented that there would be no wetland disturbance. And perhaps there could be, I'm not sure if our memo actually even says that, that, that would be a condition of your action.
And that would be fine, because, you know, we, we do know based on the, on the part of the determination that we had done. We are not disturbing any, any wetlands on the site. And I think then the last question was back to the ARB review. And I guess if I followed correctly, that's something that can be done after filing of the subdivision map. Or I'm not sure what's changed in terms of the local law, I guess, as it relates to that.
I don't think that there's any change in the new local law on ARB as to timing. And it sometimes happens that. The application is for both subdivision or site plan and ARB. And sometimes the applicant decides to bifurcate those things and that's fine. Obviously, no home can be built unless it goes to the ARB. But you can defer that aspect of it to an amended subdivision that would include the ARB review.
All right. I think those are the only sort of points that I think I wanted to, to review tonight. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to address them or Jay, if you had anything else you wanted to add.
Any other questions from the board, comments from the board?
I just, I just want to know, Mr. Higgins, did, did you ever find out what those pipes that crisscross the property are?
Yeah, I, you know what, I did ask around, I have been on the site. And I asked my surveyors who were on the site and did, you know, did the, the survey of the land. No one that I've talked to and I haven't seen it myself, the pipes. So, you know, I can't tell you they're not there, I'm just telling you, I, I haven't found them and no one that's been from my office can tell me they've found them either.
I can, I can send you the pictures, I mean, it's, it's right, when you come in off of Scunny Monk where it's, it's like chained across.
Sandy, are you talking about a chicken wire fence? That's the air of.
No, no, they're on Scunny Monk.
On Scunny Monk, there's the air of, it's, it's an eighteen inch chicken wire fence, that's about it.
No, no, I'm not talking about a fence, on Scunny Monk, there's, I think it's, it would be lot two. There's a dirt path. And if you go in, it's where the, the gun club currently, the Woodbury Field and Stream currently has that posted. And they can go in through there, as you walk along there, there's pipes that, that go above ground and underground. Several different ones, I, I have pictures of them.
Um, do you, how, about how far off the road are they, Sandy?
Um, I'm going to say maybe a hundred feet in, maybe seventy-five feet in.
What size pipes are they approximately, like five inches or thirty inches? Oh, small ones, okay.
Yeah, and they, there's, they go, like I say, they, they're underground, then they come up over and then send them, Chris, did you get the pictures?
Yeah, I was, hold on, I'm going to share my. Hold on. Share my screen, but just give me a second, I don't want to share the wrong thing.
Okay.
I have worked, I have worked stuff up. So these are. The pipes that are being talked about.
And they go over the ground and then back under. And I mean, my husband was with me and we tried to like lift them up, we thought maybe it was just pipe. But he said, no, those are, they're going, you know, they're not just lay, laying there.
And it looks like that, that's the access drive right there, I guess, the two sort of gravel strips?
Yes.
So, all right, so it crosses the, the trail.
Yeah, and that's not the only one, there's like, I, I think I took pictures of four or five different ones.
Okay, it looks like it's maybe about a two inch diameter pipe, something like that.
Yeah, it looks like a two inch cast, almost cast or galvanized.
All right, I mean, I'll go in and try to take a look for it again.
I don't know that you'll see it now.
Gotta wait for the snow to melt. But, you know, no one that I've been able to talk to knows anything about them.
Okay.
Never there, so I don't know.
Yeah, so we'll go take a look at it and, you know, maybe at some point in time, years ago, maybe somebody was drawing water out of Shadow Lake for something. I, I don't know, I couldn't tell you.
Okay.
But we'll look at it and see what it all means.
Wasn't Shadow Lake like a reserve or emergency reservoir at one point in time in the Woodbury Water System Distribution? I remember Dennis telling me a story about that.
I wish I knew. Have his history.
No, I'm just trying to think, you know, maybe something leftover from when it was some old reservoirs. I don't know, I got into a conversation with Dennis about the water system in Woodbury one day and he just started, you know, when the dinosaurs were roaming and rattling.
Hey, Natalie, maybe you could check with Dennis on that and see if he, if he knows anything about it.
About those pipes?
Yeah, I mean, I've checked all my sort of resources and nobody knows anything about them, but.
I'll ask him, I think at the last meeting, Sandy, you had asked Dennis about it and he was unsure, we did follow up with. And I know I wasn't at that meeting, but Dennis was, so.
The odd thing was that it was a, a very, very warm day and the pipes were cold.
So I think you had said they were sweating or something.
Yeah, the one was all damp on the one side of it, so that's why I was curious as to what, what it was.
I did talk to Gary about it last week as well and I think he was going to look into it, but I'm not sure with the weather, if he had an opportunity to, so.
Okay.
Only a couple of feet of snow. So David, a little bit of homework, you're almost there. Any other questions, comments that you need from us or any other guidance, are you, you good with what you need to do?
Uh, I think so, I mean, I think I have a pretty clear understanding and we'll, we'll get these things buttoned up. I think right now, probably the primary thing really is to, to, to work out that well testing program, which I'll get to you Natalie. And then, you know, upon your approval, we'll, and the board's approval, we'll get out there, drill it, get the well drilled and tested. And hopefully be ready to start to put some of these things to, to completion.
Can I have a question? I mean, I haven't closed on this property yet. And by the way, Natalie, I, I, we started this application in twenty fifteen, so we're talking almost over five years. Could this well, well, this isn't a costly operation for us to, you know, to, to go out and spend before we close. Does this have to be now or could this wait after I close on this property?
I guess I have a question, I understand that you guys are pursuing preliminary plat approval. And which will require eventually a submission for final plat approval, I know there's timeframe for doing so. A lot of our memo refers to conditions of your action being complied with before final plat approval is received. Would like to clarify that.
Yeah, I think there were a few items that. We need to get to the planning board as part of the final approval that we haven't provided yet. Like meets and bounds descriptions for the right of way. Take, you know, the dedication was the one that comes to mind. I don't believe there are any other outside agencies we need approval from, other than the DEC for a stormwater speedies permit. For disturbance of less than five acres. So presumably after preliminary approval, we would very, very quickly provide that outstanding information request final. I think that's what we had talked about in the past, Rick, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
No, I think that's right, that's why, I, I mean, if, obviously, I think what Natalie is getting after is that. If you wanted to get preliminary more quickly and then postpone for a while the final, then likely we could go ahead and. For the water testing until prior to final, but if you're going to do them fairly close together, then it really doesn't make any difference. That it needs to be done now then.
Right, that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, I think the, the only, I don't think there's any benefit to, to postponing it to between preliminary and finals. The only postponed benefit would be if it could be put off till site plan with the ARB review.
And my, well, I can advise the board, it's the board's decision, but my advice to the board and consistent with what this board has done historically. Is that the board ensures that there is adequate water and septic capabilities for each lot in the subdivision. Prior to giving a final subdivision approval.
And the, as far as I, yeah, the board hasn't wavered from that and I think that's the right thing to do to protect any particular, any purchaser of the land going. Forward, I would hate to buy a lot of land and all of a sudden realize I have no water, kind of a big thing.
By the way, the village does not provide water for, for this entire subdivision.
That's right.
Right. I'd like to make a.
If they provided water to the subdivision, it wouldn't be an issue, just as long as the village had capacity, they could give a will serve letter. The problem is, is that it's not connected to the village and therefore, that's why this board has to ensure that it has that adequate non municipal source.
Like to make a comment, this is official passenger, part of the subdivision. We're only trying to buy, we're not selling, we're buying the corner property, which is one house.
We're only trying to buy, we're not selling, we're buying the corner property, which is one house. And we've been trying, obviously we proved the septic, we've bounced around a little bit about hooking up to the sewer and I don't go up to sewer. But I, 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 you know, it's six acres, I think, um, based on the entire area. There shouldn't be a question if there's, will be sewer, adequate sewer. And we're, since we're the buyers and we're trying to get it done. Um, obviously if it's a, uh, something to provide, uh, before actual building approvals, it's fine. But to, to require us to go spend so much time and money to prove water, which I think is, everyone knows there's water in six acres, there will be water. Um, and, and, and if the issue is that a buyer will have an issue, here I am. Uh, I don't have an issue, you know, you know.
He might not wanna build. Maybe we will just decide.
Trying to get subdivision. We went into contract on it a few years, years ago, uh, and, and we, we, we did, uh, undertake the subdivision, which at this point has been a significant amount of the entire purchase price, to be honest. Um, and we've been bounced around, bounced around, and you know, I'm, I'm a little frustrated, but if the, if the question is about water and protecting the buyer, I'm waving all the rights and all the questions and all the problems. And the other two lots, there's not a question at this point. It's 130 acres left on this side. I don't know, 20 acres on the other side, which again, there will be in front of the board again and again and again to make sure that when they come. And, but at the point that it's not at this point, at this time, and we're only talking about one six acre, which is very large. We'll have water. We proved the sewer, shouldn't be any issues. So that's all I have to say at this point. And I, I do ask to, if we can wrap it up as soon as possible, been in front of the board again and again and again and again and again. And it just comes to a point which it's, it's really frustrating. Um, I mean, if the question is really water, obviously if it's delineation, wetlands, that's fine. We did it, we passed it. Where are the finish line in a point where proving water, I don't think will be any issues and.
Well, it's, it's, it's always been an issue for the board as a matter of policy, and I think it's properly placed. Also, I mean, this board has not delayed you in the least. It has been almost a year since the last time that you appeared before this board, and that's not because the board said, don't appear before us. And there's only been a half a dozen or so times that you've been before this board since September of 2018. So this is the board that has been holding you up. And something consistent with what the board has done for every other application that I'm aware of for subdivision approval.
Part of the issues, um, you know, again, I apologize if I exaggerated a little bit and I'll take it back, but part of the issues, um, was that it was delayed because we were bouncing around to say, hey, check if you can, uh, uh, attach to the sewer district. Went, we went that route. Check if we can, uh, you know, find out if you can go into this, to the water district. We find out. There was so much homework, instead of saying, okay, you know what? Prove us the water, uh, pro as a sewer, which we ended up doing again and again, you know, again, I'm not gonna say again and again, I'm sorry.
But we started in 2015. I have my.
It's, it's, it's just, it's just at a point where the water, so, you know, I, I, I raised my concern and, uh, the board should die. I believe the board will do the right thing, but I just wanted to, you know, just raise, uh, my point and, uh.
Rick, I have a question. If, if I could hook up to the local water, private water district, would that suffice? In country how the private water district?
This board, this board needs to know that each of these lots has an adequate water supply. If you want to propose that it has a water supply through some other means other than wells, then propose it. Natalie will review it. Um, if in fact it's subject to another water district and that water district, uh, will have a will serve letter, that's one possibility. I'm not going to say absolutely until we see the, the particulars of what you're proposing. But we're not saying you have to drill a well if you don't need a well. You just have to show adequate water source.
If, if I, if I may, um, you know, I, I, under these particular circumstances, the only other possibility would be that, uh, you put a map, if you put a note on the map saying that a well has not been drilled. It hasn't been, you know, the actual water supply hasn't been tested. Uh, you protect against, you give protection to somebody, a potential buyer of the lot. And, uh, that may be adequate under these circumstances. I'm throwing that out there. I think then under these particular circumstances, a map note might be inadequate protection to the public.
I'm the buyer. I'm, I'm giving you a disclaimer, you know, that, uh, I'm not gonna hold anyone responsible.
Sell it to someone else, you, that you as buyer may become a seller.
Right, and I mean, again, as it's shown, you have a preliminary plat approval, maybe one lot will be developed as a single family home, but you're showing two other residential dwellings, you know, one on each of those lots. If those residential dwellings were ever to proceed to building permit, then they should have adequate water supply. And that's, again, just, it's referenced in the code and it's a requirement of the planning board.
Just to be, are we requiring one well now or you're not requiring three wells?
Yeah.
Yeah. Your, your, your sub shows three, three, it's a three subdivision to three lots. You have two, one house being built, two more houses proposed to be built.
No, they're not supposed to be built. Look, it's, it's noted, it's noted and it's noted that they're not being proposed to be built. Not at this. They only have plans for one lot.
Not at this moment, but the whole purpose of the subdivision under the subdivision law is to go ahead and subdivide property for the purpose of resale. And, and use a, as permitted. I mean, if you want to.
But, but there's gonna be.
Will not be building a, a residence on the lots, then it's something different then. If, if that's how you want to have a deed restriction, saying you're never gonna have a, a home on those lots. But I don't think that's what you want to do.
Yeah, it, it, the way I read, the way I read the comments is that this, there's only one lot that's approved for development. The other two would be, if I'm reading this correctly.
It's.
It says the development of, the development of the other two lots is not intended to proceed at this time and not necessarily in this man.
Right. One thing I just want to clarify, and we had talked about this before, um, what we had said was it was not the applicant's intent to build on those two lots, lot one and, I'm sorry, lot two and lot three.
Present.
The fact is, in order to satisfy the subdivision, we needed to show and demonstrate that each of those lots would have a suitable septic system. Had suitable access to the road, that it met all the zoning requirements. And so that as a matter of, of that, those lots could be built on. Obviously, they've come back to the planning board for site plan approval in the ARB. But I don't think we are preempting any developability of those two lots. What I would propose is that, um, which is in line with, uh, typically, uh, applications that are reviewed by the health department and probably applications that are reviewed by the village and, uh, as well. What you typically would do is you would drill one lot for every X number, uh, one well for X number of lots and test that well at a rate that would be commensurate with the total of those lots. So what I would propose is to drill the, the, the well on lot one and test that at 15 gallons a minute. If we can get that.
That would be.
That would demonstrate three lots.
That would be a sea change in how this board has approached subdivisions. Yes, the Department of Health does that and it does it by regulation. That's, they don't just decide that that's what they want to do on a particular application. That's their standard regulation that they, because they're dealing with a large number of lots usually. They say, all right, we're not gonna require each lot to do that. We're gonna do a certain percentage of them. And as I understand it, it's not just randomly picking. They decide which ones out of those lots that should be tested. But in any event, that's not how this board has done for those, um, lots that fall below that threshold. They have required for each lot to show that it's a buildable lot and that buildable lot is with respect to access, with respect to a developable area and with respect to water and sewer. Those are the essential elements of a buildable lot.
I'm just, I'm, I'm, I, obviously I'm not familiar with every application that the village has reviewed in the past, but I, I guess I am surprised that if they had a 30 lot subdivision, that they would require 30 wells to be drilled and tested.
No, they wouldn't because the Department of Health would be dealing with that and they have their own regulations and the village relies upon those. But for the, every subdivision that I know of, under that threshold, this is the standard that they've used.
So, so I have a question. I mean, basically, I, I just want to understand, since the village does not provide water, the village still demands that, uh, there should be, uh, some kind of source of water before it's being sold?
Before it's subdivided.
Before it's subdivided? Even though the village does not provide?
That's correct. The whole purpose of the subdivision process is to divide property from the area that it is now into smaller lots. That must be lots that can be built upon, that is buildable lots. And as I just said, the essential elements of those buildable lots are access, a developable area, net of things like wetlands and steep slopes and things like that, um, and also adequate water and sewer.
Okay.
At awkward silence. Um. Oh. It's really up to the applicant how they want to proceed at this point. Um.
Very costly. I mean, I'm not, I, I'm not even the owner of the lot and all of a sudden I'm being asked to spend, uh, I've spent a fortune of money up to now in the last five years. Probably close to a hundred thousand dollars, just, uh, you know, getting these approvals and professionals and, and hiring soil tests and what have you. I mean, this is a, an additional financial burden.
I mean, obviously this is, it's a decision for the planning board and, you know, uh, what we have is that, you know, I don't know if there's any consideration given to the fact that one of the lots could be considered a natural subdivision. It's on, on the opposite side of Scunny Monk Road. Um, and also that each of the lots that are proposed would have a septic system that would basically take the water that we're using and put it back into the ground, put it back into the same aquifer. But.
I'm not sure that Vilja Woodbury recognizes a natural subdivision as code.
Okay.
Um, I mean, it can, some municipalities do. But, uh, I'd have to look at it again, but I, I, I don't know if Natalie recalls, but I don't think that there's a provision in our code that says that if it's divided by some road or some other water course or something else, that it naturally subdivides the property. I, I don't believe that's the case and, and, and under the common law, it's not a, um, a separate lot simply because that goes through.
I'm not aware either, Rick.
That's correct.
And, and the other thing again, and I, I don't know how this impacts or if it does at all, but I know like when you go to the county health department, they don't consider something that's over five acres in size to be a lot. You know, and that's what they usually, what would triggers their review typically is if it's more than, four lots that are under five acres in size, which triggers their review. They don't typically look at a piece of land that's over five acres as a lot. And again, that, that may or may not affect how the board views the, the requirement for, for, um, for water supply, but, um, each of the lots is over five acres in size.
I think we've dealt with this issue, but, um, and unless the planning board wants to change course, not just for this, but for future applications, I, I think the matter's been communicated. The one thing I do want to, um, confirm, and this is for you, Jay, um, is that previously, um, you had, um, approved upon the closing of the public hearing to waive the 62 day default, uh, decision, which still is in effect because you haven't withdrawn it. But I just wanted to confirm that that still, um, is applying. Otherwise, the board will have to make its decision.
Uh, you'd have 62 days from today if we didn't extend?
No, no, it was not extended with any limit. It was just permanently extended. But obviously if all of a sudden you said, we're withdrawing that extension and we want to insist upon the 62 days, then the 62 day clock would start whenever you, um, withdrew that, uh, consent to extend.
Right, well, we're not, we won't with, we won't withdraw it at this meeting, so, um, uh, but we reserve the right, obviously, to reconsider at the next meeting.
Yeah, if, if you want to end that at any time, just notify.
Just send a letter.
Then we'll start the 62 day clock.
Fine. Okay, but for tonight's purposes, no, we're not, we're, we're not withdrawing these.
It's been some, thank you. It's been some time, so I just wanted to confirm it on the record. That's all.
Sure, thank you.
All right. The board does, well, we're not doing any resolutions or anything tonight, so the board has time to think if they want to make any changes to normal practice, right, Rick?
Yes.
Um.
This is not something that's dictated specifically by your code or by state law. This has been a longstanding practice that the board has used conservatively to ensure that a lot is a buildable lot.
Now. Would, now I'm just throwing this out there, um, with a restriction on the, um, issuing of building permits or further subdivisions of lots, could that be contingent on proving water? On any of the, the other two lots? I know it's a change in course of what the bill, what the board has done before. And I'm not trying, I'm not trying to have the planning board be unreasonable with the applicant here. But. Um.
I think typically, yeah, typically, if you have a standalone lot right now that's undeveloped and you want to develop it, you're gonna go to the building department, ask, present your site plan. If you don't need ARB approval, Gary's gonna process it. And one of the conditions is going to be that you drill a well and that you have adequate water supply.
I, I don't know what Gary, I don't know what Gary does to ensure that they're adequate water and so I, I don't.
I'm saying as, if this board was to approve the application as it is, could this board condition the approval that any further subdivision or building of lots outside of lot one has to prove adequate water before a building permit could be issued on those lots? Does that make any sense?
Well, yes, you could do that. Um, they're not, if there was gonna be a further subdivision, it had to come back before you anyway and that issue would be raised at that time. So if you wanted to condition it upon no building permit, um, could be issued until adequate water is done, you're allowed to do that legally, but the result would be that if at that time, there was no adequate water for that lot, you now have an unbuildable lot that you have approved.
I would, I would accept that.
Well, that's what, but, but no, but that, but you see, that, that's what I'm getting at. It does, where does it, does it put the planning board in a bad spot? Yeah, what kind of liability is that on the planning board?
Means we okayed an undeveloped lot. And then, then can't they petition the village?
It's a little bit more than that and I don't want to, um, dream.
I don't have a better spot either, Rick, right?
But the fact of the matter is, is that at some point in time, if you have subdivided a lot and then the person cannot build on that lot because of your other regulations, theoretically, someone, some smart attorney like Jay may come up and say, this is a takings, a regulatory takings, because you're not allowing me to do anything with this property. And that's one of the reasons that I'm in favor of the policy that this board has of when you ensure a buildable lot, it includes water and sewer.
Hundred and twenty acres and one.
Typically, typically we've, you know, listen, every, being, you know, I appreciate Rick calling me that smart attorney, but you know, typically I'm looking, if I'm, if I'm having a client buy a lot and it's a lot on a filed map, I'm looking at the notes. And typically I'll look to see whether the well has been drilled or whether a well has not been drilled. And my, I tell my client that he's buying, you know, there's certain risks with, with every purchase and one of them may be that, you know, you may want to drill a well before you, you buy this lot, but, um.
I'm ready to sign this claimer. I'm not gonna hold the village liable or the county or the town.
It, it, I'm not gonna try to go down that route.
Word, I, I don't disagree with.
Answering the chairman's question.
If I may make one other comment, Rick, I'm looking at the definition of a lot in your subdivision regs and it says it's a parcel of land that's on a subdivision plat, a recorded map or deed or by meets and bounds or separated by a public street. So this may, I think you do recognize, um.
What's the section you're reading, Jay? Cause what I.
But if. Yeah, section, you know, it's the definition section of your subdivision regs, 27220 is the definition of. Two seventy two twenty is the definition of lot. I think there are, I think you do recognize natural subdivisions. Uh, where lots are separated by public streets.
Okay.
So, but I'll, I'll review that with you after, you know, between now and the next meeting.
Sure.
To be honest, I don't think we're to solve the issue tonight, but I do need the board to, to think. And, you know, we'll, we'll, you know, there are the delicabs on. Um, we are not trying to get, I don't want this board to come across as unreasonable. We're not an unreasonable board. But we also do have to look out for the vil, everybody as a whole. You know, you as the landowners or potential landos and builders. And we also have to make sure we don't put the village or any new landowners in a precarious spot as well.
I do appreciate it, and there's one point that I, I want to finish off and from my end. Is, uh, understanding that the only subdivision that we're really trying to achieve is that six acres. The other two acres, which is about twenty something on the other side, which was created only because of the road. And then the other, then the hundred and twenty acres, which are residual, uh, remaining from the six acres. It's not something that someone will try to develop at this point, because I doubt someone would be an idiot to build one house. On a hundred and something acres and the same thing on the, on the other side, on twenty something acres to build one house. This is, either way, going to go in front of the board when the, when the time will come, and it's going to be a discussion at this point in time. Um, again, you got, you got to prove it that's buildable, but everyone understands, I think, is access to the road, direct access. Um, the water is, I would say ninety nine point nine nine percent available without actually showing it. But besides the point is, it's going to come in front of the board when time comes. So it's not like, hey, there's a, you know, two acre and three acre and five acre, it's ready to be developed and it's, and the question is going to be, is it? It's just not available for development. We're not subdividing twenty six and a hundred acres. We're taking six and anything the other side is automatically residual, which is not, which will come in front of the board when time comes. So that's.
Anything else from the board consultants or applicant on this application for this evening? I, I do appreciate everybody's thoughts and comments, you know, sometimes decisions are difficult and take a lot of, uh, thought. And, uh. We will, we will. We'll get there, is all I can say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Good evening.
Bye. Have a good night.
Right. All right.
I'll also be signing off since, um, you did not, uh, leave me for the final case.
No, unless you want to start talking about traffic.
I'll let Mazur take that flag.
Yeah. All right. Last item on the agenda, uh, Rainbow Group Inc. Marriott Review Status of Project and Site Plan for Proposed One O Eight Room Hotel. To, uh, to include guest suite amenities, parking and associated utilities. Said property is located at New York State Route thirty two and Turner Road in Central Valley and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map. Section two two six, plot one, uh, lot six dot one, seven and. All right. Okay, so just, so everybody realizes this is a pretty focused conversation on this, um, application tonight. Really here to talk about the potential of, of advancing Sika, Secra and talk about, um. Traffic and some issues that, uh, H two M has in their memo. So with that, Natalie, let me get, let you go first, just because. I'm sorry, Steve, are you, who's representing the?
Uh, I'm, I'm here for the applicant. Also with me is Carlito Holt. Uh, he's our traffic consultant for Provident Engineering Design. And then also, uh, Will Frank, uh, is the project attorney. If you want Natalie to go first, you want to meet.
Do just bring us up to speed, because I know there's, uh, with, uh, where we stand, especially with the DOT and the issuing of permits.
Okay, uh, good news is I'm not drilling any well. Um, so the last time we were here was December two thousand and nineteen. Uh, after that meeting, that was our initial meeting to the board, the presentation of the application. Uh, we then, uh, resubmitted back in February, a whole host of things happened back then, one called a pandemic. Uh, but in the meantime, uh, we were authorized to work with your consultants to, uh. Evaluate access onto thirty two. Uh, there's also, uh, an applicant next door to us to the south, uh, Avalon, which is also a proposed hotel. Uh, so in, in August, we had a consultant's meeting with the DOT, uh, both applicants, uh, your consultants. And then members of the DOT, uh, to discuss concepts, alternatives. Uh, for, uh, both applications and individual applications. Um, we then had a, uh, ESO meeting, uh, or ESO meeting was arranged, uh, for our application. We met with, with your services, got their input on the concepts that we were evaluating at the time. Uh, and then shortly after that, we got note from the planning board that, uh, please resolve the access. Uh, issue with DOT prior to coming back to the planning board. Uh, so we worked with your, 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 with Mazur Consulting, uh, we, uh, contacted the DOT. Uh, and we've advanced a set of plans to where we could actually make an application to the DOT. And in order for us to do that, there is the process called the perm thirty three, comes in three parts. Uh, the first part we submitted, uh, to the DOT in the beginning of December two thousand and twenty. Uh, which included a, a concept plan or should say concept plans with two alternatives for access onto our site. Uh, a traffic impact study, uh, location plans, existing conditions map. Uh, because there are some right of ways issues, uh, for both, uh, Turner, Turner Road and thirty two in our site. Shortly after that submission in December twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty, we got our comments back from the DOT. Supplementary comments. And one of their, basically the direction that we got from them is they wanted us to combine our two alternatives. Uh, to the plan that was submitted to you, uh, and is before you right now. Uh, and what that is, is, is we relocated our, our main access on the nor, the most northerly part of our site. That we could, uh, to get, uh, a reasonable distance between, uh, Turner Road and our proposed access. We're proposing a realignment of Turner Road because now it's a disaster and we're going to realign it to a more appropriate intersection. And we're going to work out, uh, and we've discussed with the DOT, we need to work out, uh, some right of way issues. That currently exist with the properties the way they are. Uh, the site is made up of three tax parcels. Two of the tax parcels to the north, uh, have not been before any planning board for quite some time. So not uncommon, uh, that those, uh, deed lines go out to the center line of the road. Uh, the most southerly par, parcel must have been before the planning board at some point in time. Because the taking for Turner Road was already done. So there, there will be an offer, uh, to, uh, to the village to modify the right of way of Turner Road. There also be a proposal to the DOT to modify the existing right of way, uh, along our frontage along thirty two. Um, we are now, we have the plan before you. Uh, we're also, we'd like to advance that with the DOT. Our next step to get substantive comment from the department is to fill out part two of the application. Along with our plans, uh, for their review and comment. Uh, but we'd like, we don't want to get the, the cart too far ahead of the horse, because we haven't been here since two thousand and nineteen. Uh, so we think that, you know, based on the efforts of our, our efforts, your consultants, traffic consultants efforts in the DOT. That what we're proposing right now is a reason, is a reasonable plan. Uh, and I'd just like to say that, that it, for us to move forward, uh, we do need to start to flesh out secret. For the department, because they're, they cannot make any decisions until we conclude secret. Uh, number one, and number two is we'd like to get some input from the board on the plan. At secret, because the applicant, um, you know, and nobody's, it's no one's fault. I mean, nobody anticipated a pandemic, but he's a contract purchaser. He's under some pretty heavy, uh, contractual obligations. It's not an issue with the board. I understand that. Um, but he's also, uh, we're also required to get our plans reviewed by his corporate, uh, sponsor. Uh, and that's also a very lengthy process. Uh, we've gone ahead and advanced the plans under this current access scenario, so we can at least start that process as well. Uh, but it's a lot of time and money involved with that, and so we would like to, uh, hopefully in the near future. Start to look at some of the site plan components along with the DOT components. Having said that, if I could just turn it over to Carlito for a couple of minutes and just let him go through the, the plan and his report. That was, was the subject of review by the DOT.
Okay, so go ahead.
Carlito, if you're.
Yep, thanks. Carlito Holt with Provident Design Engineering, so, um, I, I think Steve gave a, a good overview. I think one thing, uh, he maybe failed to mention is that also at Turner Road, not just with the realignment. Um, DOT is requesting that a left turn lane be installed along Route thirty two. Uh, for vehicles making a left to onto Turner Road and the applicant, um, is committed to doing that. And, um, that would be part of the next round of submittals to DOT. Um, we did prepare a traffic study, um, dated December second. That was submitted to the, to the village as well as, um, to DOT with our part one submittal. Uh, as Steve mentioned, we got, we got, um, some preliminary feedback from DOT. Ultimately arriving at the access scheme that you see before you now on the plan. And, um, they essentially greenlit us to go ahead with the part two submittal. Which is really formally designing that, the, 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 those improvements, you know, essentially to like a sixty, seventy percent. Design effort, uh, so they really get to see how it's going to lay out. Um, defining the, the new right of way, looking at drainage, um, turning radii, et cetera. Um, so, you know, I think we're in a good position with DOT at this point. I think the process is moving forward. We also got comments from Mazur, um, which are all, I'd say fairly technical in nature. I've already discussed them, um, with Mr. Greeley, and I don't, I don't see any issues with addressing any of the comments. And I don't see any of the comments significantly changing the findings of the traffic study or altering, um, the improvements that are being proposed. So I think that was generally it.
I think you, you know what, let's start with, uh, Paul actually first, because I think traffic is the big. The biggest talk right now.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, I think Steve and Carlito have given a, a good synopsis of, of where we are. Uh, they received the preliminary comments from, uh, New York State DOT. Uh, we had prepared a January twenty eighth memorandum with several technical comments, which. Um, I think Mr. Holt can address, uh, ranging from, you know, clarifications on some of their analyses. Uh, requests for accident data, uh, summaries, which the DOT also asked for. And, and other related items, so I, I think that's pretty clear. Um, there's no major issues there. They're all technical cleanup items, I would call them. Uh, the DOT's recommendation, and I don't know if all the board members understand the plan that Stephen Carlito described. Um, but the, the plan, uh, would have a right turn in, right turn out. Access directly to Route thirty two to the project site. As they described, uh, Turner Road would be realigned to more of a ninety degree intersection with thirty two. To remove the current substandard condition, uh, DOT is in favor of that. Uh, it would be aligned opposite the motel northerly driveway, if I'm not mistaken. And, uh, the left turn lane would be provided as part of this application. So that traffic turning onto Turner Road, uh, would be separated from the through traffic. So that would be, uh, an improvement that would help the overall operations of that intersection. And conceptually, that's what DOT has recommended. Uh, we agree with that recommended improvement. Um, there are, you know, several cleanup items that would be done as part of the DOT's process. Uh, I think the information that we've asked for, uh, is generally consistent with DOT's detailed technical comments. And the applicant, you know, you know, can make that submission relatively easily. I, I think from the board's perspective, um. Yeah, we've heard from the DOT now, okay? They've made their recommendation, uh, on the limitation of that northerly access directly on thirty two. And they want the left turn lane improvement to be included. Uh, I think there was some preliminary discussion that there was not enough traffic to warrant any signalization. Of this intersection, uh, however, the turn lane, uh, installation would allow that. In the future, if it was ever, uh, needed. So I think that's kind of a, a quick synopsis of where we are. Um, I, I think again, the technical comments were pretty straightforward. I, I will point out that the analysis does show that left turns exiting. From this site heading south on to Route thirty two will experience delays. Uh, the, the left turn lane on thirty two will improve that operation and accommodate their traffic. Um, but the solution would be a, a traffic signal at this location, which doesn't appear to be warranted. Based on their traffic generation figures. But again, that's DOT's final call, but the, the intersection would be at least reconstructed. Uh, in a, a manner that would be, uh, proper in terms of geometry. And would allow for a future installation if necessary. And as Steve had also mentioned, back in, I think it was September, uh, the, uh, ESO, uh, meeting. Uh, discussed this, uh, in terms of the intersection and their concerns. I think now that we have a direction from DOT on a conceptual basis. Um, they should be brought, you know, back in to get their feedback to make sure. Before the applicant goes to his full design, uh, that the ESOs have no, uh, issues with the, the proposal.
So the DOT is saying they recognize the need for a left turn lane from thirty two to the hotel. But they don't write, they don't, they're saying traffic isn't bad enough to require a signal.
At this point, and I think one of the comments would be that they would want a detailed, uh, signal warrant analysis. But based on their initial, uh, review, that it didn't satisfy the warrants. But I think they're going to require as part of their, uh, next level of review for that to be submitted. Uh, as part of the application.
Look, because someone from the DOT should sit out there between the hours of like three and six and try to make a left. Off thirty two, it's any, any, anything along there, it just, it doesn't happen.
The, the other, the other, uh, you know, Steve mentioned the other hotel project, uh, adjacent to this. Uh, which is a separate application, but I, I believe that the intersection improvements that this applicant is making. For the turn lane at Turner and thirty two, uh, would accommodate, you know, traffic. If, if traffic did turn left off of thirty two onto Turner, if that other application did proceed, that, that would accommodate that movement. And, uh, I think DOT has not, as far as I know, provided a response on that application. Uh, but that may affect also their position on signalization, Mr. Chairman.
Is it typical for the DOT to look at these two applications separately when they're right next to each other?
Well, I think they're reviewing them in concert. Um, I believe the, uh, PDE submission, uh, was made a little sooner to DOT. I believe the DOT's preliminary comments really focused on. Whether or not they were going to allow this application to have a full access to Route thirty two. And also the comments that they made relative to the align, realignment and improvements at thirty two in Turner. Uh, would hold true, uh, for the other application, uh, regardless of their. Uh, final determination, because on that other application, there was a request for a new access. Opposite Oakland Avenue. opposite Oakland Avenue, which I be believe the DOT is still reviewing. So I I believe they wanted to get out some direction on the intersection of thirty two and Turner and some direction to this applicant on what they would permit them to do on Route thirty two. So hopefully, the other review is shortcoming, you know, from the DOT. But I think the improvements that Mr. Holt has provided at thirty two and Turner in terms of the turn lane is is very good in terms of an improvement at that intersection regardless of anything else.
Thank you.
I have a question. Would this require any acquisition of property owners along the way to realign Turner Road?
No, a- actually, the plan that Mr. Holt submitted and conceptually approved by DOT is all within either the existing right of way or the lands that are controlled by the applicant. And there would be some dedication, I believe, Mr. Holt can answer this, but there would be some dedication of the hotel property frontage to New York State DOT as part of the final permit process. So it does not require any other private properties. It's all within either the Village Right Of Way, DOT Right Of Way, or lands that the applicant owns.
Okay, thank you. And is there any plans for a sidewalk to be put in into this plan? Along the hotel property?
So so I I believe as part of the DOT's review, they mentioned preliminarily sidewalks, but that would be part of their final, you know, plan submission. I think it would be appropriate with what else is along there, and that would come in the next level of design plan from the applicant. The applicant can answer that in more detail, but I think that's appropriate as part of this intersection reconstruction.
And and that's, that's, that's true, Phil. You know, right now, we're at the, we're at the vehicular level. And once we get there, we can start to fine tune that. And obviously, you know, pedestrian access and sidewalks and safety would be be part of that. And that'll be part of the Part Two submission to the DOT as well.
And Robert, to to further your response, on these applications, DOT is generally requiring all applicants to install sidewalks along their frontage unless they're, you know, the local municipality has some aversion or to it. But DOT is requiring that on most of these applications.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just want to make sure I'm I'm understanding this right. So there's just, there's only going to be one one way in and one way out on the northern side, correct?
Right turn in and right turn out, correct?
Okay.
Anyone approaching from the north would have to make a left turn onto Turner, proceed to the driveway on Turner to access the site, and they would be provided this left turn lane to to store in on Route thirty two so that the southbound through traffic could proceed and not create any backups on Route thirty two.
Okay, I'm I'm confused. So to go into the site, if you're coming, if you're coming southbound, you have to make a left on Turner, and where are you going in?
The driveway. I I don't know, Steve, if you could.
I was just gonna say, can we, would it be helpful, Chris, if we put a plan up?
Sure. I was gonna, I was looking for it, but if you want to do it, I'll, I won't. Click your thumb.
Carlito, you want to, what?
Yeah, I just lost connection to my server.
All right. I can pull up the site.
Gotta give you permission to share.
Yeah, let me, if you give me permission, oh.
You should be able to now, Steve. You're gonna do your best, you're gonna be your best Mike Dickon impersonation here with your, and start drawing on the.
How's that?
Yeah, it's got to be big. Yeah, I think it's good.
Yeah, let me just. Does that, how's that?
Yeah, Steve, I I think that's, yeah.
So just, so here's the proposed north access with right in, right out. You have a center island. So southbound traffic would then get into the proposed left turn lane. You'd make a left turn on to Turner Drive, Turner Road, and then access the site via a secondary means of access of Route thirty two.
Okay, because that's where I was confused, because it says controlled emergency access.
Sandy, between this plan and what we're now with correspondence with with the DOT, it is now going to be a full movement. Will not be initially, when we talked to Mazer, we were thinking about having a sec, just a means of of emergency access.
Okay.
But when the DOT came back and said, listen, you know, we'd rather see that full access. So the next plan you'll see will, that'll be a full, full, full movement access.
Okay, so there's going to be, can you, yeah, go and pull it down again. So this north, north, how are you going to stop someone from making, trying to make a left turn into there? I mean, if if somebody's lost, you know.
Right, and not uncommon in this type of restricted access, you're gonna have an island, there'll be, there'll be a no turn, no left hand turn somewhere up here. I'm sure.
Steve, just point out that that's a raised island. It's not just striping. It's a raised island. Again, this is conceptual. DOT will adjust that accordingly so that vehicles cannot make that left turn maneuver, Sandy, and it would be signed accordingly also.
Because that that reminds me of the the entrance on to what is it? Work and drive, when you go into where TJ Maxx and that that whole little mall in there, I've seen people just jump right over, you know, hit that as they try to turn in where there's, where they're not supposed to be turning in. And even going out where they're not supposed to be going out. So, and I mean, that's not even like a huge, you know, heavily trafficked road compared to Route thirty two. And that's what, that's what concerns me, but I guess the DOT knows better. So that that left hand, that left turn lane starts just shortly after that?
Correct.
And where is that in relationship to the other side of the road, to like the dugout? I mean, to to watch people try to get out of there when that's packed?
The, well, this alignment is the ho- the hotel, the northern entrance to the existing hotel across the street is right here.
Okay.
Just to give you an idea of where that would be.
So then the dugout is just north of that?
Just north of that, correct. And just, I know there was some talk about the right of ways. This line is the existing property line. This is our, this is, will be our, you know, conceptually, this is the proposed property line. So what, so this wedge of land right in here would be dedicated to the DOT. And then similarly, right now, this is the karate place parking lot right here, and turn lane comes up kind of like in a Y. This is the existing property line. And what we would propose is this, this is, this is outside of us, but this piece in here would be dedicated to the village for the realignment. And basically, you know, it it's, it's, it's over. Or this, it goes, our deed goes to the the center line now, and typically, that would be dedicated to the municipality. So this piece would get dedicated to the village.
And will, will thirty two have to be widened to fit in that that left turn lane?
We're currently, another part of this Part Two is a more refined design, and in order for us to do that, we are doing a very detailed survey right now of the right of way, which includes the property lines, right of way lines, existing, existing development, existing features, utilities, et cetera. We're hopefully that there won't be widening, but because it's really wide. Carlito, did you get back on your server?
No, but.
Remember, see, you have that by SMA, that's gravel and that where the water always pools over there? You probably got a whole, like, lane worth of land over that bottom, over there.
I I have an, Steve, I have an aerial up I can show.
Yeah, let's do that.
A sense.
Steve, could I ask you a question? With respect to the sort of triangular piece between your old and new property lines just north of the realigned Turner Road, and you show that your property line now is going outside of your existing property line, yeah, just north of there, yeah, in that area.
Yes.
Who owns that piece now? Is that the village? And they would be, you're anticipating that they would deed over that section to the hotel?
Yes, because that's really the almost, that if, when you go to Carlito's plan, that's roughly where the paved surface area is now of partially of Turner Road and partially that weird shoulder on the easterly side of Route thirty two.
And and the reason I'm asking that is that both with respect to the realignment of Turner Road, as well as if that piece is going to be somehow swapped to the applicant from the village, that obviously makes the village an involved agency for which they would have to give their permission for both of those things.
Correct.
So for secret purposes, et cetera, I just wanted to have that clarified.
Well, we designate them as an involved agency because of bonding and stormwater maintenance.
But this is. Elevated, if you will.
Yep.
This is the case, let's, we have another application where this kind of stuff got pushed to the end. Let's get this stuff flushed out early. And where we need to go. So we're not, we're not playing catch up at the end here, and all of a sudden, everybody's waiting for things to get done. Can we just scroll back up to the northern entrance real quick before you flip to your earlier view? I know you said the DOT has final, I guess, final control of what that looks like, but do they take input from us on what we want to see that look like?
In terms of the layout of the island, et cetera? Yeah, I mean, they, they, they will, but they're going to go by their standards. If, for example, they they were allowing a left turn out of that driveway and and the village felt strongly that it should be permitted, we would make that known to the DOT. I think their right turn in, right turn out, and the final details, and one of our comments was, as these plans progress, that we get the detailed design to review so that if there are any such comments, we can get those to DOT before they issue a permit.
Here, here's, here's my concern. I think it's the same concern Sandy has, is that we have something similar to this at the other end of Turner Road down by the commons. Where, and on a busy day or a frustrating day, or when someone just loses their patience, we've all seen cars go up over it and go up Turner Road the way they're not supposed to go to.
Understood.
This is a little bit different, because now this is someone trying to either cut across, whatever. So instead of just being like a six inch curb, is there any design standard to kind of make this, or maybe the the curving for the right in or the right out is kind of like a little exaggerated? So like, it really is blatantly obvious that this is a right in or, you know, you get where I'm going?
Yeah. So so in terms of the of the driveway, yes, I think the raised island treatment and the striping, so what this plan doesn't show, but I think would be on the the more detailed design plan. And this would really be to make it clear that you don't want to have left turns out of that driveway is there would be additional striping where this lane transitions from a turn lane be coming back to the two lane roadway of thirty two. So there would be very significant crosshatch striping in that area so that it wouldn't even appear that you could cross that island to get to this, to and from this driveway. And I think, you know, the height of that island and even the striping around it would be to, you know, angle it as much as possible that you couldn't make that turn. And of course, it would be signed appropriately.
Oh, well, signs are optional, right? We live in New York.
Yep.
And just, you know, and not, just as part of the traffic impact analysis, the, it is, we we anticipate, and you know, I know Phil and Carlito talked about this a little bit, is really the origin of where people are coming from for this particular land use. And I believe it was that ninety percent of the future occupant or user of the hotel are going to come from the Woodbury Commons, the seventeen corridor. So most of, we see the traffic really coming in here as a right turn, right, right in. And then they'll be able to exit out from Turner.
I'm sorry, you had a, you should just be able to share your screen, Carlito.
Here, let me stop.
Steve, my other question was the the residential property right next door of the Grimes. Was any, I mean, they have a hard enough time getting in and out of their driveway.
Oh, the existing one?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, wait, wait until we go to the, hopefully. So what we, well, part of this, Sandy, is that, you know, we're, we're, you know, right now, there's two, well, there's three curb cuts, I think, two, definitely two, well, either next to or on to Route thirty two, which are getting eliminated. And then, of course, the realignment of Turner Road. So a lot of that stuff that's there now will get cleaned up.
My question is the house right to the north of of the northern entrance?
Yep.
Their driveway to try to get out for them, I mean, it's hard enough that it's, you know, that they have to negotiate thirty two. I I'm just hoping that traffic, too much traffic leaving there isn't, isn't going to their property. They've been there forever.
Agreed. And again, just going back to the origin and destination of the of the residence for the hotel, they're, they're going to go back to the seventeen three way quarter, back to Woodbury Common. You know, so we really think every ninety percent of that traffic's going south again.
Okay.
Do you see my screen?
Yeah.
So you see, so this is obviously a plan that has evolved based upon DOT feedback, but the 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 real thing, and this goes to your question about the need to widen is, you can see down here at Turner Road, there's this wide swath of pavement that exists today. Widening for this left turn lane essentially occurs in that existing pavement area. So the amount of additional widening, you know, it's going to be finalized with survey and formal design, but we don't anticipate the amount of widening needed to really approach beyond the existing edge of pavement.
Yeah, I was thinking more northbound, where you have that, how far is it, where does the turn lane start? Up more, right?
The turn lane would start, actually, do I have a it, it's gonna, it starts essentially right here. You taper into it at this point.
Yeah, that's where I was talking about. Where's that that coming from?
So that's that's coming from the applicant's side, if anything.
Okay.
Not looking to widen into the opposite side of thirty two.
Okay.
But potentially, there'd be a widening or a additional lane near Mobile, you know, leading to the other proposed hotel. I mean, would that be one whole project going from, let's say, from Buena Vista all the way down to Turner Road? Is that, is there any plans for that by the DOT?
There are no current plans. As, you know, the the chairman mentioned before, you know, DOT reviewing the two applications together. That is the part they haven't, as far as I know, completed their decision on the other hotel access opposite Oakland next to the mobile station. the other hotel access opposite Oakland next to the mobile station. Uh, so I think that would be part of that review where they would address basically from Turner South. Uh, in terms of where the left turn lane that Carlito is showing here. Um, the lane itself would use a lot of that existing pavement area. Some of that pavement may have to be reconstructed as full depth pavement because part of it is shoulder area and it will become a travel lane. So while the, the width may not have to be changed right there, the, the makeup of the pavement may have to change. Um, as you go north from here, uh, the transition that Sandy was talking about, there may be some slight widening. But based on this concept plan, it looks like that would all be within the existing right of way. So there may be some curbing work and some minor widening to get that transition heading back. Um, but the area south of here, I think, is the DOT's focus on whether or not they will permit that access opposite Oakland for the other hotel.
From um, Bond Street or past Bond Street, there's a turning lane that runs all the way down Route thirty two to uh, Maple Avenue, right through the heart of Central Valley.
Yes.
It seems like, you know, if you keep going from three lanes to two lanes and it's very confusing for drivers. I, I wish the DOT would look at the whole thing as a whole.
Yeah, I, I think that's something that, you know, the village, we could, we could you know, draft an additional letter to the DOT requesting that. Uh, their focus right now is on these, what I'll call access related improvements. The area north of there uh, would probably require a land acquisition to put the turn lane in. And I believe in the past DOT, at least from a planning standpoint, had looked at that because you, you know, the reality is if the land was available, when they did some of those other improvements, they would have extended sections. Uh, but typically it's because of right of way constraints. But on a, on a long term picture, depending on what they decide down at Oakland, it would make sense to have a center turn lane for the entire section of roadway. Uh, their focus now is on these individual intersections to get cleaned up uh, with each of these applications.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments or concerns on the board for traffic?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, one other thing I'll just point out, and this goes to your question about DOT's determination about signalization. So um, as Mr. Holt's plan you see here is aligned opposite the motel driveway there to create a four way intersection. So DOT will take that into consideration when they look at the warrants. And depending on what their determination is on the other hotel application, they may require, you know, that some of that traffic to go through this intersection, uh, which would also weigh in on whether or not it would be signalized. So I think that's something that will come down the line. But at least with this geometry, it would position the intersection so that a signal could be installed.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for traffic? On traffic? I insist.
Mr. Chairman, could I just make a couple of comments?
Sure.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Will Frank, uh, I represent the applicant uh, who's the contract VND of the property as, as Steve mentioned, and I'm not going to make a whole long speech here because our consultants have, have really done a tremendous amount of work on this and they've, they've detailed what's been happening with the project so far. Just first of all, thank you for putting this on the agenda because we uh, as, as noted, we are the contract VND and uh, trying to make some progress here and, and the fact that the um, the chairman and the board put this on the, the agenda is, is very valuable to us and it helps us not only move the project forward, but give some assurance to uh, to the, uh, to the current owners that we're, we're working diligently and we, we truly appreciate that. I also appreciate the, the fact that um, you all participated in the ESO meeting back in September. And we, we've seen the notes from it on Mazur's comment letter. And um, certainly those are, those are valuable things that were talked about at that meeting. One point, a couple of points I wanted to make. Certainly, the DOT is looking at this project and, and the traffic needs along with at the same time, looking at the, the Avalon project, but I do want to make the point that while our project and, and my client has every intention of cooperating with, with Avalon when necessary. It's an independent project. So whatever the status of the Avalon project becomes, we best DOT to obviously move forward. Considering this project as standalone and when necessary to, to complement and cooperate with the Avalon project and of course, the needs of the village. Um, so that, that was one of the main things I wanted to note. The other point I wanted to raise um, in the H two M memo dated uh, January twenty eighth, on page three, section four, there's some, there's a point about seeker and, and the preliminary classification of this project as type one under the seeker regs. But as noted, the um, the building area is under a hundred thousand feet. It's, it's shade under eighty thousand square feet. So um, I was curious if, if there was any consideration to reclassifying the project. I'm just throwing that out there. That's obviously for you to discuss with, with counsel. But uh, that was the other point I wanted to raise tonight, other than uh, thanking you again. And I'll shut up now.
Chris, I can, I can address that if you want to rate, want me to do so at this time.
Go ahead.
Um, with respect to seeker, um, Will is absolutely correct. Um, we had understood this project to be in excess of a hundred thousand square feet when it was originally typed. And therefore it was typed as a type one action. Um, it is now clear that it's less than that. It's uh, as Will said, just under eighty thousand square feet. So um, one of the seeker actions that I'm suggesting that you take this evening would be to retype the action as an unlisted action. Um, you also can take a seeker step of assuming lead agency. Um, and then finally, if you want to authorize our office to go ahead and draft an EAF part two um, for your discussion at uh, next time that this application is on the agenda.
And if, if I may just supplement what Rick just said. If the board chooses to reclassify the action and retype it, it's by no means going to um, lessen or diminish the work that's being done by the project team, the diligence and, and all of that. And the intensity level of our work with DOT and with the village and with any interested involved agencies is not going to change. So I, I just want to make that point.
That's correct. In fact, there's, there's really no difference. As far as the planning board standard of review is lead agency between unlisted action and type one action, you still have to go ahead and, and look at this with reasoned elaboration and look at whether or not there may be a significant adverse environmental impact so that the same level of scrutiny is given to a type one as to um, an unlisted action. Um, the only real difference practically is that there is a presumption that a type one needs to have an EIS and there's no such presumption for an unlisted action. Um, but you certainly, you can have an EIS for unlisted action and you can not have an EIS for a type one action. So it's in a sense, um, it's, it's more a formality than anything else, in my opinion. Um, because if the project requires an EIS, it's going to get it. And if it doesn't require an EIS, it's not going to get it. It's not going to rest upon some presumption of a typing issue.
You have enough, Rick, to do the type, the, the, the part two of information?
Excuse me?
You have enough to do the EAF? Part two, information?
I, I think so. I think that, you know, the, the main aspect of it, uh, we certainly can start through that process. The main aspect of it is going to be of the impacts going to be traffic. That's going to be the, the main impact. There are other issues. Um, but I think the way, the purpose of the EAF, which should be done fairly early in the seeker process, is for you to determine of all those identified areas in the part two form, whether there may be a significant adverse environmental impact. And then, and I wouldn't suggest this unless you're rushing to an EIS um, positive declaration, typically what you would do with these projects is forestall your determination of significance and give the applicant an opportunity in some direction as to what you would need for them to submit additional studies or additional information or additional uh, project modifications to mitigate any potential significant adverse environmental impact. So I think it's the, the right time to start this process. I'm not saying that you necessarily will make a determination of significance. Um, once you start looking at that, you may require some more information.
Thank you, Rick. Well, do we know what level of service thirty two operates out of, as of now in that area?
Well, you, from a level of service standpoint of uh, the side roads, okay, because you, you really, you know, at, at signalized intersections, most of those signalized intersections operate at an overall level of service D or E in the worst time periods. Pre, pre uh, pandemic volumes, okay? Uh, in terms of the unsignalized intersections, any side road um, and, and as identified in, in Mr. Holt's study, making left turn movements are in peak hours are either levels of service E or F, okay? And the F means that the delays are typically in, in excess of average delays in excess of sixty seconds. So um, that's with the heavy through volumes. So uh, at any of the intersections where you reach a level of volume to warrant the signal, uh, that would address some of those unsignalized delays for the side roads. But at those unsignalized intersections, the thirty two traffic, for example, other than the turning, uh, if people were turning off of thirty two onto Turner, the through traffic on thirty two would be unimpeded through this intersection in peak hours. With the provision of the turn lane, southbound, that will continue, okay? And if a signal was installed, the overall intersection would be improved. But the, uh, I should say the delay for the side road would be improved. But it would create some additional delays on thirty two traffic, which is you know, effectively free flow uh, with, with the provision of the turn lane.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Chris?
Yep.
Um, I just, I, when I was looking at the um, the notes from the ESO meeting, I noticed that the, um, no one from the fire department was at that ESO meeting. Did you guys get input from them?
They, I believe they sent an email. I'd have to go back and look. They were invited. They chose not to show up.
But do, shouldn't, do we need to get input from them as far?
Yes, what, what Sandy, one of our recommendations in our uh, January twenty eighth was to reconvene with the ESO to get additional input. Um, because now we know what the DOT's direction is to the applicant relative to the Turner Road intersection. So one of our recommendations, which we should discuss with the board tonight, would be to set up another meeting with the ESOs and have every, all of them look at Mr. Holt's plan and the input that was received from DOT. So that before they proceed with their design plans, that we have that additional input.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, okay, sorry Natalie, I know. We didn't forget about you, but Paul, he was, he was, he was the star of the show, the star of this application.
That's all right. Phil's got a lot of good things to say and uh, you know, honestly, I think you guys covered literally all of my comments. So I will not take any of your time any further. Uh, the only thing I just wanted to mention at the end of um, our memo is, and it's more ministerial than anything. Uh, the GML response from the DPW referenced the town of New Windsor, so it may need to be redistributed, redistributed. I'm not sure, Rick, if you uh, have any opinions on that or if I should uh, let Maria know. But otherwise, um, really good comments. I think uh, the relocation of the uh, Turner Road or the Route thirty two access to the north is, is a benefit away from Turner Road. Um, I did have some confusion. I thought that that emergency access still existed, so I was confused about how left turns uh, maneuvered into the site, but that's been clarified. Um, what else? Uh, the ESO meetings, I agree that there should be another one uh, during that, the meetings in September, uh, the applicant was asked to confirm the site distances and the turning radiuses for fire, village fire trucks. So we assume that'll be confirmed in the future. Um, and yeah, I don't, oh, the, as far as sidewalks go, the county planning department did also suggest uh, they, those be provided. So again, I'm, future revisions and if you guys have any questions for me, I'm, I'm here, but it was a good, a good meeting.
Don't worry, the, I'm sure in the next couple of meetings, the tide, the tide will turn and it'll be the other way around. So Phil, just uh, uh, your opinion, we're in a good spot to go, reconvene with ESO?
Yes.
Or, okay, so Natalie, do you want to take that as a takeaway? And see if we get some availability on everybody's calendars?
Will do, for sure.
Um, and if you want to put it out um, virtually, if you know, people don't want to come together at Village Hall, I think I'm, I think that'll be okay this day and age too.
Okay.
Maybe we'll get a little bit better buy-in. Um, that's that. Does anybody from the board have questions for Natalie before I do some uh, housekeeping? All right, so I will offer a motion to retype this on the secret as an unlisted action.
Second it.
Second, Robert, any question? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, I will also offer a motion to declare uh, this board as lead agency.
I'll second.
Second by Sandy, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then last but least, I'll offer a motion to have council um, prepare an EAF uh, part two for review by this board.
Made the motion.
By Tom, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
You forgetting anything, Rick?
No. But, no, that's it.
All right, so good. You guys have, uh, so Steve, you guys have a little bit of homework?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could, uh, just a quick question. I know, uh, you've authorized Rick and Kelly to go ahead and prepare the part two. How do we come back to the table to discuss that? And do we have a timing on that? Uh, and will you need anything else from us to make any, any of those preliminary decisions?
It's going to be up to the chairman. I'll just weigh in for a second. It's going to be up to the chairman as to when it's brought back on, obviously. Um, and whenever the chairman wants us to prepare it, um, for whatever meeting agenda, we'll get it done. But I think that the issue, and the chairman may want to weigh in on this, but there's an issue related to this whole traffic issue that I think needs more input than what's had to date with respect to the board of trustees and their um, intent with respect to this project. The realignment of Turner Road, the um, transfer of village property to the applicant as proposed, et cetera. Um, I think this was in line with what the chairman was talking about, that we ought not to be pushing that off to the end of the project, but ought to get their input sooner.
Well, I, we would be more than happy to pursue that with the village board. Uh, I think I would like to have in my quiver, uh, so further input from your uh, ESOs. So we can, so we can at least uh, report back to the village board on that, on that matter. Uh, confirmation from your traffic consultant and um, I think maybe one more round of the DOT. I'm not sure, or maybe that's not important right now because we're talking about Turner Lane or Turner Road. So at least uh, if we could get that accomplished in short order, then we can at least start the discussions with the village board.
Yeah, I, I was raising it in the context of when the board goes through its EAF part two. Some of those impacts. Um, some of those impacts very much impact the village board of trustees and so it's hard to think that we could get through um the part-two and a conclusion without hearing from the board of trustees.
I, I, I don't think the ESO is going to have that big of an issue with what you guys are proposing now for the DOT. Um I, I don't think there'll be an issue with turning raises and entrance and access. Of course, we'll let them speak for themselves and we'll get that meeting scheduled as quickly as everybody's schedule allows. Um but I do think it behooves you as the applicant to get in front of, to at least get in front of the village board and let with, you know, the reports that we have now and the designs we have now and let them know this is a potential possibility, so you can get a feeling from how they on, on, if there may be a need for dedication of uh village land or not, because, you know, I don't want to go another two or three rounds of going back and forth with you guys and then the, the village board comes back and has a different of opinion or something like that, because then we're, we're going all the way back and starting all over again. Is this, this is like a huge part of this project is the ingress, egress right now.
So are, uh, is the suggestion at this time, you want us to make contact with the village board and try and get it on an agenda with them? Just so I'm clear, so we're fine, we're fine doing that. I just want to, Rick's point is well taken and the chairman's point is well taken. We just want to have a clear um direction on what we're taking out of this meeting tonight.
Uh, we can't speak for the board of trustees.
Understood.
But, but um I think from the planning board's point of view, certainly from my point of view and the seeker process, um, is that these plans are going forward and there's a big um decision-making by the board of trustees to allow this to go forward. And as you know, Will, th- this board can't say, yes, this is the plan, go ahead and build it um and require that the board of trustees follow in line. So there's no sense in going much further, I think, before we know the intentions of the board of trustees.
Certainly behooves us to do that, and I think in some respects, we can at least a little bit proceed on a parallel track, because we certainly, we certainly have uh work to do going forward with DOT and I know um at the uh, at the ESO meeting uh back in September, the mayor participated in that meeting at the time, and so there was representation for the village board. But I agree, it certainly doesn't hurt to to move forward with them as well and and at least try and get this on their radar, for sure.
That's what we're looking to get you to do because we don't want this to, you know, potentially submarine us in the, in the future.
The point is clearly made and well-taken. I got it.
And Mr. Chairman, is there a date that you would like us to submit the EAF part-two?
Last look at a calendar tonight?
Well, I think the applicant was asking as to, so that they could try to figure out to in coordinate with the next submissions.
I know, I just, I, just to say it's gonna be, you know, we're gonna be able to get you on for the next meeting is, is, is willy-nilly. This, I, this, I've got a bunch of applications queued up.
Yeah, and I wasn't trying to force that, but I mean, if you want me to submit it in two weeks, I, we can submit it in two weeks and you can have it for whenever you want to schedule it.
Yeah, if, if that's a reasonable timeframe for your office, then let's do that. It's just Natalie will tell you, we have a very lengthy agenda of other applicants that we're trying to cycle through.
Uh, we can do it. And as you know, I mean, our, our filling out of the EAF may in fact need some additional information or just be a draft for starting the discussion on the EAF part-two to determine potential areas of significance so that we can then follow up and see what the applicant needs to provide.
Sounds good.
All right.
Everybody, everybody good? Everybody clear where everybody's going after tonight? Just want to make sure there's no confusion. Okay. All right, any other questions, comments, concerns?
Steve, do you need to throw anything else out to the board this evening?
Uh, no, I'm, we're good. I, I'm just thanks, uh, you know, again, it's, it's um, we needed to, we needed to get the cart closer to the horse. Uh so uh I think this is good. We've got a direction on a couple of different avenues and uh we'll just keep moving forward.
We will, and I also want to say thanks again.
And if you want to just hang out for any particular reason, no?
My wife texted, I'm still in my office. My wife texted me asking if I was coming home tonight, so I'm good to say goodnight to everybody. Sleepover. I might, I might as well. All right, everybody, thanks a lot. Good night. Good night. Thank you all very much. I guess that's a motion to adjourn, right?
Yeah, motion to close?
That's good.
Sally, Sandy, all right, see everybody in two weeks.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.